Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from Dr. John Frawley, pastor of Metropolitan Bible Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Christopher Miller of Cub Scout PAC 1510. Please stand.
Lord, your word says here in Romans 13:1 that "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God." We pray for all the decisions and the leadership that is done today. We pray that it would be in accordance to your perfect will. We pray for our city, that it would be a beacon of light, that it would be a beacon of hope, Lord, in this world. We pray, Lord, that all of our leadership would understand that they have been appointed in their positions ultimately by your sovereign authority, and that all that they do today and all that they lead, Lord, in all the ways that they lead, our city would be pleasing unto you, and that you would be glorified in all of our discussions and proceedings today. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in saying the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you so much Pastor Frawley and Christopher. Great job, Christopher. I call this meeting of the City Council to order. We have one item under office of the mayor. That is a resolution for Battalion Chief Chris Black, and I will make my way to the Join me, Chris. Now, you may recall, last meeting, we had quite a few Employee of the Year commemorations, and Chief Black was just very adamant that he wanted to have his own day. And so, he is getting that. No, I'm kidding. I don't know why he wasn't here. But we're so glad that he is today, and we're so grateful for his service to our city. And we'd like to learn a little bit more about that. So I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Battalion Chief Chris Black has been a city employee for 27 years and is a district chief supervising a fire district. And whereas Battalion Chief Chris Black manages daily staffing and duties within his district and responds to emergency calls for service where multiple fire apparatus are needed. Whereas Chief Black is also responsible for ensuring daily training activities that take place within his district and the daily operations aligned with the vision and mission of the Oklahoma City Fire Department. Whereas Battalion Chief Black spends time every day identifying ways to improve services to his community and is always seeking opportunities to learn new methods to fight fire through science and technology. Whereas Battalion Chief Black has spent the last year stepping into the role of shift commander during the long-term absence of the assigned B-shift commander. And whereas Battalion Chief Black has taken on this role in an exemplary manner, handling multiple difficult situations and garnering the respect of his peers. Whereas this council desires to recognize Battalion Chief Chris Black for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Battalion Chief Chris Black, 2019 South Oklahoma City Qantas Club Firefighter of the Year.
Well, that's pretty good. Let's hear it for Chief Black. That's awesome. This is a resolution, so we want to vote on it. I would entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You are officially the firefighter of the year. Would you like to say a few words, Chief Black?
Sure. Wow, what an honor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate this. I would be remiss without thanking my command staff who gave me the support and the tools and guidance to do what I've done, but more importantly, the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department who are out there every day, serving the citizens of the city. I've had a blessed career over 27 years, and every day, I wake up ready to come to work and do it all over again. So I wouldn't change a thing and wouldn't have it any other way. Very honored for this recognition and appreciate being here.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, that concludes office of the mayor. We are now at item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. We can take the two items with one vote. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Request for uncontested continuance is item five. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, we have several. The first one is on page 21, item 9I1, item B, 1637 Linden Street. We're going to strike all of these items. We need to strike this to re-notify the owner. Item I, 112 Southeast 42nd Street, the owner is removed. On item 9J1, unsecured structures. Item A, 3219 North Blackwelder, the owner is secured. Item C, 5901 West Hefner Road, the owner is secured. Item D, 1637 Linden Street, to re-notify for additional structures. Item G, 1412 North Virginia Avenue, the owner is secured. Item J, 1700 Northeast 10th Street, the owner has secured. Item K, 1736 Northeast 11th Street, the owner has secured. And item L, 2004 Northwest 12th Street, the owner has secured. On page 22, still under the same item, item M, the owner is secure. This is 2230 Northwest 13th Street, the owner is secured. Item N, 1217 Northwest 18th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 1514 Northeast 18th Street, the owner has secured. Item R, 1008 Southwest 25th Street, the owner has secured. Item V, 3432 Southwest 36th Street, the owner has secured. Item AC, 1143 Northwest 95th Street, the owner has secured. Item AD, 1204 Northwest 18th Street, the owner has secured. Item AE, 1300 Northwest 102nd Street, the owner has secured. Then under 9K1, abandoned building, still on page 22. Item A, 3219 North Blackwelder Avenue, the owner has secured. Item F, 1412 North Virginia Avenue, the owner has secured. Item H, 1700 Northeast 10th Street, the owner has secured. Item I, 2004 Northwest 12th Street, the owner has secured. Item J, 2230 Northwest 13th Street, the owner has secured. Item K, 1217 Northwest 18th Street, the owner has secured. Item X, 1143 Northwest 95th Street, the owner has secured. Item Y, 1204 Northwest 98th Street, the owner has secured. And item Z, 1300 Northwest 102nd Street, the owner has secured. And that is all the items I have.
Z on our agenda. It goes, oddly, it goes from Y to AA. So I guess it's, we'll just consider it.
It already came off, I guess.
All right. Is that all?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, item six, revocable permits. We have item A, revocable right-of-way use permit with Stockyard City Main Street to hold the Stockyard City St. Patrick's Day Parade, and Debbie Harrison is here to speak.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Freeman. Today you have before you consideration of the special event permit for Stockyard City Main Street to hold the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. It's scheduled to be held on Saturday, March 14th, at 10:00 a.m. It is free to the public. It's going to be led by the famous Chain Ranch Longhorns. We have a number of other marching bands and community organizations and equestrian groups participating, and I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Sounds great. Councilwoman.
Sounds like a great time. I will motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a great event. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through H we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll now adjourn OCMPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have two items we can take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we merely have claims and payroll, but we'll go ahead and take a motion on it. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on item seven, the consent docket, on page four of your printed agenda. I know we have one scheduled presentation on item...
AP.
AP. Is there anyone, any other items that anybody would wish to pull out for a separate vote or just for extra comment? Seeing none, we'll go to AP.
All right, Kevin Cook is here with Populous to give his presentation on, this is a project that's associated with the Convention Center project. It'll be on 4th Street. The work that we're going to be doing on 4th Street has been presented to the advisory board.
Good morning, Council and Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having us. First and foremost, I hope you guys are as excited about the Convention Center progress as we are. It's really coming a long way, but this is a separate project associated with the Convention Center along 4th Street. So I'll kind of give you a little history of this, and then we'll go through this. So our subcommittee, a while back, asked us to look at an idea to provide a unique element down 4th Street. This is running east-west between Robinson and Broadway, between the new Omni Hotel and the Convention Center. So they wanted to do something to enhance 4th Street. If you may remember, we've already enhanced the paving and the hardscape with planters and trees and outdoor plaza space on the north side of our Convention Center to allow pedestrians to utilize this 4th Street for maybe outdoor events and other exhibits that may want to spill out there. But the idea was to do something a little bit more unique, something that created a little bit of a wow experience along 4th Street. So we came back with this option. What we're presenting today is the preliminary report to you guys. We've presented this to subcommittee and advisory board already. And what you see here is a series of canopies that move up and down each side of 4th Street along the hotel curb and the Convention Center curb line. These are alternating heights, and they have a slight angle to them, the canopy column. And what this does is creates kind of a variation of heights and movement of the canopies. And we feel these have a unique look that resemble a little bit of the nature of the park across the street, so to kind of pull that design from the park with trees and other things down this very urban street. One thing we had to do when we looked at, look at these, I'll back up again, 4th Street is full of a lot of utilities. There's two different OG&E duck banks, there's storm and sanitary sewer lines, there's data lines for both buildings in here. And so threading these down really was a challenge to try to make sure we can get these down without having to impact any of the current utilities in the street. Another thing you'll notice in the center, there's kind of a gap between the two sets of canopies. On the hotel side, that is their current bus drop-off zone. So when guests are brought to the hotel, they'll pull buses off there along the curb line and let guests enter and exit their buses. And we didn't want anything above that area that could collect the exhaust and fumes from the buses as they're queuing in that area. So it made sense to have kind of an opening there. And then, as you'll notice, to the far east, we have two alternate canopies based on budgetary reasons. One of those is fairly close to the hotel electrical transformer vault, so again, another utility we had to be mindful of as we located these things. So there's three main components to the canopies. Basically, a structural steel trunk, as we call it, or the column. And then, the top is a louvered canopy that has a plastic ETFE membrane over the top of it. ETFE is a unique material that it's clear, it lets light come in, so plantings can still grow, but it does provide shading, and it can be pulled really tight, so snow and ice and other things don't just sit up there, that they'll slip off or drain off easily. And there's a gutter around the edge to collect all of that water. So the intent is to do that with the ETFE on top of the wood louvered members you see running horizontally below. So it creates this sense of a shaded structure to allow people to enjoy that space a little bit differently. As you can see, there's three different heights, and as you go down the street, we'll see in some of the renderings here in a minute, how they vary and move. The foundations are very large for these canopies, as they're very tall. We've worked on fitting the piers that go down to the ground in the large pier cap to fit between all the utilities and 4th Street. And so what you see here in the rendered views, you can see a couple of different views. If you start on the bottom left, this is standing closer to Robinson Street, looking to the east, and you see the hotel on the left side and the Convention Center to the right. And you can see how the canopies angle inward toward the street in certain ways, and then the different heights create this variation. You look in the top right, you can see what it could potentially look like with some, you know, event tents, maybe an art fair or some sort of festival that has decided to close 4th Street down for a pedestrian event. And then one thing we were mindful of in the bottom right corner, looking back towards Robinson Street, is the scale of these canopies didn't impact a lot of the other things we already have designed along 4th Street. So you can see our pedestrian signage. We called those pedestal poles, and the seating and landscaping along the street still can remain as is as best we can to avoid having to do any redesign. The idea with the lighting on these canopies, we wanted to have the ability to have the lighting kind of brand and tie-in with the Convention Center. As you may remember, the Convention Center has different lighting along the balcony and in the ceiling soffit that can change colors, it can be branded for an event, a Thunder Game, whatever it may be. And the idea that these canopies could also do that. But one of the comments that came from our subcommittee was the ability to not just light the underside of the canopy so they're glowing, but to try to make the space below at pedestrian level also have that feel, so the light would actually spill down onto the ground plane. Another comment that came of them, they wanted us to look at, would be the ability to hang banners and other things along the street, along the canopies, to allow customers the ability to brand that space outside. On the electrical side, we're looking at putting just general-purpose power in each canopy, so event tents and other things could get some power if they needed to at each canopy. And then collecting any sort of rain runoff on the canopy, down gutters that would then run down to the street. So our current schedule is today, we're here to just ask for approval for the preliminary report, to then take this into the next stage of design, into construction documents and final plans, where we would then come back to you, it looks like in June, hopefully maybe a little sooner if we can, to present to you a final plans with a more final cost estimate. If approved, then we would take it into potential bidding and start construction soon after that. The hope would be that we could get this done, hopefully, in the timeframe that the Convention Center is finishing at the end of the year. And we did a very preliminary cost estimate. We have a set overall budget of $4 million, and right now, with 10 of them, we're just under that. And if you added two more, we're looking at around another $800,000 with the two alternates. Any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. So this money is coming from specifically the Convention Center budget?
Correct.
Okay. Were there any discussions about just closing the street and creating a pedestrian-only throughway, or maybe even just like a bus drop-off and pedestrian-only?
That was discussed well before the canopy situation even happened, and the city always wanted to maintain 4th Street as a true street with the ability to close it off for events. Mainly, that's in relation to the emergency vehicle access that would be required, and these canopies are now tall enough to allow any fire trucks, any other type of emergency vehicles through there as well.
Because I guess, from my perspective, and just two weeks ago, we were discussing a pedestrian bridge project that was only $3 million that would connect two of our trails. And when I look at $4 million for a handful of canopies, that, in my mind, is not really going to transform that area. I think probably for way less money, we could have closed the street, planted trees, created bench, and really created a plaza area. And so I just, I have a hard time feeling like this is a really good use of money when, when again, like this could be miles and miles of sidewalk, or again, really like truly transform that space, in my mind. So that's, I just kind of have a problem, I struggle with it, I guess.
Can I add something to that? David Todd, program manager for MAPS. We did discuss that with Public Works, and we talked about the need to keep 4th Street open, because if something was to happen on the boulevard where you couldn't pass through that area, this is the only street really back in that area that lets you get all the way over to Shields. As Kevin said, that it will be open for traffic and bus drop-off, and it's also part of the front of the drop-off for the Convention Center. But it is able to close for events. We designed it, Kevin designed it, so that the Convention Center can literally spill out into the street because of the overhead doors that we put on the north side. But it is heavily landscaped, it's got planting beds, it's got all those things in there for that reason. And this is kind of a response to some of the comments that if you walk from the hotel to the Convention Center and it's raining like it is today, since we didn't do the pedestrian bridge, this was kind of a response to that, is it gives some cover for people walking across the street.
I can appreciate that, and it's nothing personal, I just, it's a hard thing for me to swallow, and in my mind, it doesn't do much. Nothing against the design or anything, I just, for a million dollars, it's hard to swallow for a project like that, so.
David, may I ask you a question? We're still within budget with this expenditure as far as...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this item?
Yeah, I want to echo what councilperson Hammond is saying about, again, the design's great, I like it, but I'm looking at 4th Street, and I'm looking at the map right here, and I understand the response about the emergency vehicles, but then I also think of live at 5th Street in Louisville, Kentucky, where they have closed off what used to be an entire shopping mall, opened it up to the only pedestrian traffic. So I guess if this is, I mean, again, cool design, I'm glad that you're going to shelter the people from the rain, I would hope that as we move into the implementation of MAPS 4 projects, that maybe because of what councilperson Hammond and I are saying, that we might think of other streets that could actually be closed down to pedestrian-only traffic. You know, right down the street, for instance, where on the west side, right by Classen, right off of Main Street, you have the 21C Hotel, and you have some development right there, that's that street that's right there. I don't know what traffic counts are there, but I'm guessing there's, it's very low, and I could see that as an opportunity. Point being, like, good job with your design, but I just think it could have been better as a pedestrian-only street, and we should start thinking about other opportunities to do that sort of stuff where it makes sense.
I'd like to vote separately on this.
Okay, sure.
I'm ready to do it.
You want to make a motion on this item?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. So this is item AP, 7AP. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. If no one else has found anything else they wanted to talk about, we could entertain a motion to approve the other consent docket items.
I'd move the second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Concurrent docket, we have items A through M we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to item nine, items requiring separate votes. These are our planning cases, and so we'll start with 9A, ordinances on final hearing that were recommended for approval at the Planning Commission. Item 9A1 is at 10900 Northwest 119th Street, going from PUD 789 to R2. Councilman Greiner.
Yeah, this zoning case has staff approval, unanimous Planning Commission approval. I don't know of any protest. That'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A2 is at 10603 North I-35 Service Road, going from CHC to C-3. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, is the applicant present? I'm assuming no. All right, with that, I understand we did not have any protest, so I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A3, 6929 Northeast 115th, going from AA to RA2. Councilwoman Nice.
Looks like that's me again. And is, do we have anyone signed up to speak, Ms. French? All right, no protest. With that, I'll move for approval.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9A4, this is at 9120 and 9200 West Wilshire Boulevard, going from R1 to AA Agriculture. We do have some folks who've signed up to speak, but you want to start us out? Councilman Greiner.
Yeah, this is 10.8 acres. It's a downzoning from R1 to agriculture, so I thought we'd start with the applicant. Can you just tell us a little bit about your application?
Yes, I'm wanting to go from R1 to AA for two purposes. One is grow house of medical marijuana. Second is I have livestock. I have horses, been there for 19 years. So that's a second.
So the livestock's already been there?
Yeah, I've been there for 19 years.
I don't even know, is that allowed in R1? I guess so.
It is if you're over an acre, I believe, right?
Originally...
Okay. You want me to call out the, we've got three...
Yeah, here in a second. I was wanting to read two sentences from the staff report, just to kind of give us a little bit of a gist of how the staff feels about this application. Says, "When locating agriculture uses or zoning adjacent to any zoning district, Plan OKC does not identify any compatibility issues." And then, "The request, if approved, would continue the current agricultural use in an urban area." So that kind of sums up, I think, the staff report in a pretty good, short little two sentences. So yeah, but let's hear from people who've signed up.
Thank you, sir. If you want to have a seat, we'll, we're going to have some other folks come up. Gail Dennehy. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and three minutes, please. Thank you.
Gail Dennehy, 9210 West Wilshire Boulevard. That's a UConn address. I had several issues in that Mr. Escobar, who just spoke with us, actually lives on 4.8 acres, which by the zoning laws, needs to be five acres, and his neighbor to the east, who is related by marriage, is on over six acres. They, so that goes against the density requirement of five acres. Also, with either of the individual properties, they do not have 400 feet of street frontage, which on page six of the city planning commission's report. If you lump their properties together, I think I don't understand that, how two individuals can say, hey, we both want to grow medical marijuana, so let's just lump these properties together, and then we're qualified. just lump these properties together, and then we're qualified." Also, the statement that it is sewer accessible. Living next door, I'm on a septic, and my house is probably about 15 years newer than theirs, and I'm just wondering who follows through on these things? Because I do have livestock. I have 16 of the 30 acres in this area of land that is still somewhat agricultural, but every property west of Morgan Road on Wilshire Boulevard, they're all zoned R1. When I bought my land, it was zoned R1, and that was 10 years ago. So, the city council, at the time that they went in, at one time, it was all agricultural. But at the time that it was all changed to zone R1, now for the purpose of starting yet another business, when both of those neighbors to the east of me do raise cattle, have bulls and heifers and horses, and they also have some other businesses that are being run out of those residential areas, I'm just thinking, how many before they, what they really need is commercial zoning? These are things that did not come out in the report, and I've, I've never had any kind of protest about anything, so I'm sure there's lots of information that I may just be ignorant of, but I can read the writing and see that some of the things, they are not qualified individually, and why do they get to lump theirs together? That does not seem congruous to me. So, I appreciate the council's time and what you do for all of us as citizens, because otherwise, my voice wouldn't be heard at all today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just to clarify, this isn't, obviously, in Oklahoma City, as are the neighbors. It is a Yukon mailing address, and that's the whole thing, but it is, it is well within Oklahoma City, so I just wanted to.
And just in the event that I was wrong, I did call Canadian County to make sure that there had not been a selling or joining of the properties. They're still separately owned, and Mr. Escobar's part of the property is 4.8 acres. That, and the fact that, I don't know that they've been connected to sewer, and my great concern is herbicides and pesticides, because if they're just allowed to run off, I do have livestock also, and horses are more delicate than cattle, so.
Thank you.
Bob, can you, can you speak to, like, the process of how properties are combined to, is there anything in our code that restricts that practice?
Bob Teener, Development Services Director. The zoning is, to double As, is to combine, you have to have a minimum of five acres. They've combined to make 10. The things she's talking about are development regulations. So when they came, when they were to come in for a permit, they have to meet a minimum lot size of five acres, and they have to meet the minimum street frontage. But they can do that with a deed approval once the property's owned. So, I mean, she, she has concerns that he's at less than five acres now, but he can, he can do a deed approval once the property's owned to get to five acres, and then he would be in compliance.
Okay. That makes sense.
Okay.
Just a second.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, Bob, are you saying that when you use the term deed approval, so the adjacent property would deed two tenths of an acre over to the 4.8 acres, and thereby that person then having five acres?
Right, it would create two five-acre tracts, or a little over, this is actually 10.8, I think.
Right.
So it'd be a little over five acres if they combined.
So would this decision, one way or the other, be contingent upon that event happening, the transfer?
No, it wouldn't be. Because their, their application as a request is over 10 acres, and we're just looking at the zoning of the property, and that would be consistent. It's when they try to develop it and get permits that they have to meet those development regulations.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Rachel Ruiz?
Again, I have a petition here and some notes from the council. My name's Rachel Ruiz, and I am a resident of one of the home additions adjacent to the downzoning request. I'm a voter, I'm a marine veteran, a teacher, wife, and mother of soon-to-be six children. And, Mr. Greiner, you stated that there are no compatibility issues between AA and R1 classifications. On Page 1 of Mr. Escobar's application, it states that the subject area is considered a low-intensity urban development zone? Mr. Greiner, that seems to be a compatibility issue to me, because of Mr. Escobar's 11-acre property is surrounded by residential neighborhoods, with the exception of the south-facing property. If it would please the council, could you please clarify what constitutes a low-intensity urban development? And also, Mr. Greiner, you also stated the fact that the applicant mentioned growing marijuana has no bearing. I would agree with you wholeheartedly, except crops of marijuana and crops of potatoes and tomatoes are entirely different. Title 63 of the Public Health and Safety, Section 425, states that municipalities may follow their standard planning and zoning procedures to determine if certain zones or districts would be appropriate for locating marijuana farms. Mr. Greiner, if marijuana truly has no bearing, why must Mr. Escobar disclose his crop type? Marijuana does have a bearing on the zoning, because the law itself states the city council is to follow their standard planning and zoning procedures to determine if certain zones would be appropriate for locating marijuana farms. Also, in that same title, Paragraph G, states, "The location of a retail marijuana establishment is specifically prohibited within 1,000 feet of any public or private school." If the law is going to address the placement of marijuana operations specifically in regards to public schools, tell me, council, is not the same logic applied to R1 zones where children live? I say that it does, in the clause previously stated about determining if certain zones or districts are appropriate. And here are some reasons why I think it's highly inappropriate to have farms next, pot farms next to residential zones. Please observe Exhibit A here. In my hand, I hold articles documenting families and residents of communities who are now living in the destructive aftermath of these farms. Unfortunately, in their cases, their governments did not do their jobs, abandoned them, and here's what happened. Public health effects, example number one, a headline reads, "Living near marijuana grows, farms can be unhealthy," and it talks about being involuntarily exposed to concentrated chemicals emitted by cannabis operations triggered severe headaches. Public safety example, one Oregon resident states, "Security concerns produce a cartel-like atmosphere with drones, security cameras, armed guards with high-powered rifles." And then finally, "Loss of property value concerns." The SLA Cannabis Watch Group says, "If someone starts a commercial pot growing next door, you'll definitely want to disclose it." This sounds like a bruise to my home's property value. The fact that Mr. Escobar wants to downzone says that my property value will devalue as well. Tell me, sirs and madams, how will the city handle the hazardous environmental health effects on public health, on the public safety, and also in the loss of property? Council, liability becomes a factor here. Who then is responsible for this? Observe Exhibit A. My youngest two children are with me here today, and Freddie is holding a sign that says, "Just say no" to residential pot farms and reverse discrimination. The approval of this application accommodates one Oklahoma City resident. Sirs and madams, I'm here this morning to remind the council of the other Oklahoma residents, like me, like these children, who are entitled to the same rights and protections as Mr. Escobar. Please take note of the petition I submitted today on behalf of the residents who are concerned. This petition, ladies and gentlemen, was started Sunday evening, and I alone put, like, three man-hours into it, and we were able to gather some, a relatively great amount of signatures. And imagine if, how many more signatures I could obtain if time allowed. Don't forget, I have five children, so. In closing, Mr. Escobar said, "It's legal now," and bringing lots of tax dollars to the city, so it benefits a lot of people in a lot of ways. But because of this tax revenue generated by this farm, Mr. Escobar and the Oklahoma City government will be benefiting greatly. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, is the prospect of tax revenue more important than the health, safety, and quality life of the residents? I'm no expert, but I do have, I do have a bit of common sense, and I say the R1 classification of the 10.8 acres in question should stay that way. There are compatibility issues with this applicant's R1 and AAA zoning request. Marijuana does have a bearing on the application, and it is highly inappropriate, it is a highly inappropriate place for a pot farm. The council should use common sense as their guide, and also come to that same determination and deny Mr. Escobar's application. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mayor and city council members and Mr. Freeman, my apologies for reading this. I had a large brain tumor, maybe a few years ago, so my memory is not as I would like it to be. I am opposed to the rezoning of the area at Wilshire and County Lane Road, and thank you should be also for the safety and welfare of our children and community. My friends that now live in this neighborhood, the Ruizes, have young kids, and I know firsthand what influence this will have on them. I am now going to bring your attention to what happened in Colorado after recreational marijuana became legal in that state, and soon could and would be here. I was born and raised in Oklahoma, however, I recently lived in Colorado for eight years during the time marijuana became legal. I saw immediately the devastating effects this drug had on the state. The Colorado legislature made the grave error of only focusing on one side of the equation, the tax dollar revenue, supported by mass media hype. Illegal grows spring up in great numbers even in our small Colorado county. Our county sheriff, along with the FBI, made many arrests for illegal farms, along with any illegal type of means they chose to protect those farms. Needless to say, that the drug cartel was moving up from the south in order to take full advantage. Healthcare costs in ERs and fatal or injurious car accidents also rose in great proportions, reducing any positives that they made us believe to be true. Also, what is rarely reported is the backbreaking burden presently on Colorado's mental health system. Also, Colorado once had some of the most beautiful city parks in the nation. Today, you cannot enter those parks for fear of being mugged by someone addicted to pot. More than once, we heard gunfire in our quiet, peaceful Colorado mountain retreat, only to find out later that it was an illegal pot grow. So either you side with the constituents of Oklahoma City, or you side with the criminal element that feeds off this street. When I lived in Oklahoma City 30 years ago, and now, just moving back here, I could not believe how medical marijuana has been thrust in our faces by way of shops on every retail block, as well as all of the billboard advertisements. Just remember, this now is just a first step on a road that we do not want to go down. Once in on the cultivation front, which is already on a prescription basis here, it propagates like a virus with similar ill and fatal effects. The legalization of marijuana does not eliminate the criminal element, but only emboldens them for less regard for the law and the rights of law-abiding citizens and our brave law-enforcement officers. So as far as the item PC 10629 for rezoning is concerned, I believe this farm could be completely rural away from families, providing safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods. So, if you lived next to this pot farm, especially with children, would you want them raised next to the less-than-desirable element it attracts? Thank you for listening and your consideration.
Hey, Council. Joy Reardon, 125 Northwest 9th. I don't live in the neighborhoods that is involved in this, but I oppose it for the simple fact is, within the last month and consecutive, since they've opened these dispensaries, they've been robbed, stolen from, and everything else. This is just adding a bigger target for the neighborhood. Several of the growhouses has also been hit. It's been on the news and stuff. It's just, I don't know why people want to rezone something for residential, for agriculture, when there's other areas in the city that's already agriculture that aren't around houses and stuff like that. Not counting the, has anybody done a study on the chemical runoff from these growhouses? The pesticide that they've got to put on the plants, the herbicides, the fertilizers and stuff? That gets into our city water system, and eventually comes into our drinking water. When is enough is enough. Right now, they're building a dispensary, and I found out from our, our school that there's one down on Portland that's within the zoning restrictions for, for schools. We have a high school at OSU OKC, and our, our school. OSU OKC runs from 10th Street to Reno, from Portland to 44. That's all OSU OKC campus. That's a school. I go to school there. I don't want any more pot even close to a school. And how close is this to a school? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be back later.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, Ms. Ruiz talked about a few things that I'd said, so I'm going to clarify some of them. She said something about this being a low-intensity urban area, and again, according to our comp plan, agriculture, agricultural use is compatible in that land use. When I say that this marijuana issue doesn't have any bearing on the zoning, I mean that in, in the way of that the ordinance that we are going to be voting on does not mention marijuana use. The reason that this, the reason that Mr. Escobar will be able to, to be able to grow marijuana on, in an agricultural, an agriculturally-zoned land is because of state law. It's because State Question 788 passed a couple of years ago, and personally, I voted against State Question 788, and the main reason is because it was much, much, much too broad of a law, and I did not think that it was being genuine in the fact that it was medical, that it was actually medical marijuana. So, me personally, I would be extremely in favor of another petition that allows the state and cities and counties to regulate it appropriately. But at this point, we can't. And so, for me, I am, I am a big-time property rights guy, and I'm a big-time rule-of-law guy. And so right now, if we sit here and we deny this application of Mr. Escobar, we are changing the, we are changing the rules in the middle of the game. And so, you know, I have four kids too, and I can tell you from the city's perspective, if I backed up to this property, I would much rather the property behind me be zoned AA than zoned R1. And the reason for that is because if it's zoned AA, it's going to stay afield. If it's zoned R1, there could be a whole bunch of homes be built right behind my house. And so, for me, if I lived in that neighborhood, I can honestly say that I would still be in favor of this zoning, because I see it as a land use change, not a what that actual person is going to be doing on that, on their property. Because I can tell you for sure, no matter what the property is zoned, my neighbor has the potential to do something on that property that I don't personally like. And so, with that, I'll just open it up to the council, if you guys have any, if you guys have any comments or questions.
I have one question.
Okay.
What if, what if he said, "Hey, I'm going to have a thousand-pig hog farm there"? Would we still think that we would want to allow for that, that down on it? Because we're open enough to all ag use.
I would say, again, there would be nothing in any of our ordinances. I would say, again, there would be nothing in any of our ordinances or our plan that would say that he couldn't do that and that we shouldn't approve it.
James, I appreciate your explanation as to your position on this matter, but for some reason, I just don't feel comfortable in approving this at this time. And I apologize to everyone. I did not study this issue prior to today, but I do plan on it. And many of the issues you brought up, James, I certainly agree with, but again, for some reason, I'm just concerned about this particular issue and therefore, I'm going to vote against.
And you know, the other thing is, is that he mentioned that the purpose of the application was to allow medical marijuana. He didn't have to say that. He could have just said, my purpose is so I can have agricultural uses on my property.
Right.
And so the fact that he said it is a testament to him being honest with what he's going to do.
Correct. And thank you for bringing that out and thank you for being so transparent. I do appreciate that. I just am not in a position to agree at this time. Thank you.
Councilman McTee?
Your honor, I have a question or I'm in a quandary. What implications are there if I vote against this particular zoning? Somebody from municipal councilor's office tell me what I'm doing if I vote no?
There aren't any implications to you personally as a council member. It just is defeated. They can go to district court and challenge the denial and a judge would decide whether it should be approved or not.
So within the framework of the debate then, I do as a councilman have the opportunity to vote no?
Yes.
And then it would just go to district court?
Right.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments? Councilman?
I'll move for approval.
Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. It passes five to four. All right. Item 9A5, this is at 217 Northeast 15th Street going from R1 to R2. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, Ms. Francis, did anyone sign up to speak? Okay. Is the applicant present? Will you come forward and explain what we're doing?
Good morning, council members. My name is DeAndre Martin. My family has owned this property and the property next door since the 1980s. They were previously told that we weren't allowed to build on the property for whatever reasons, but I did my research and found out that we are allowed to build on it and since we are allowed to build on it, we wanted to push for a R2 zoning, to build a duplex to cater to the Oklahoma City market.
I do see there is one letter of protest. Were you able to talk to the neighborhood and the neighbors?
We did not. I read the letter of protest, but I have not talked to any neighbors or neighborhood.
I'm going to move for approval, but I do want to, I hope that you will at least continue to communicate or start a conversation with the neighborhood because most recently, we passed something in this community that the community did not want in the community.
Yes, ma'am. We would definitely take those measures.
Thank you. I appreciate that. With that, I'll move for approval.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Councilman McTee, you might want to jiggle your thing. There we go. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 9A6 is at 924 Southwest 59th Street going from SPOD 726 to C3. Councilman Greenwell?
Thank you, your honor. Is the applicant here? Well, this was unanimously approved by the planning commission. They are requesting it to be modified from a SPOD to a C3 Community Commercial District and Southwest 59th and Western is highly commercialized at this point, so I would move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. 9A7, 12000 Northwest 122nd Street going from AA to R1. Councilwoman Greiner?
Yeah, this one's changing it from AA to R1, so we're going the opposite direction I assume nobody signed up for this one. All right. I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A8, 9605 High Noon Road going from R1 to PUD 1739. Councilman Greiner?
This one's going from R1 to PUD that's allowing a multifamily, which as far as I know, there are no protests. I know if I would live in the area, I would be protesting it, but I'm going to move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A9, 4545 North Lincoln going from I2 and C3 to PUD 1741. Councilwoman Nice?
I don't know how to follow that. I will, I know what this is and this is for the planned unit development for the Lincoln Plaza area and I will say that we do know that construction has begun in this area and we are very grateful for that. And with that, I will move for approval.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A10, 1625 Northwest 16th Street going from R1 to SPOD 1160. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, I just want to clarify. So when I originally saw this, because I know there was a lot of conflicting protest-slash-support letters in the back of this application, when I originally saw this come before the planning commission, it was rather open and it sounds like through the process, it's been whittled down to be a little more specific and exclude just the possibility for a surface parking lot. Is that correct?
Yes, we need to defer this item.
Oh, do we? Okay.
Because we have a problem with our design statement, the PUD, but I think most of the issues have been worked out with the neighborhood.
Okay.
But we need to go two weeks.
Okay. Then I will motion to defer for two.
Correct. It will come back with the amendments that were made.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Got a motion and a second to defer the item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A11, 141 Northeast 26th going from R1 to SPOD 1175. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, this is to permit use, mixed-use residential and commercial development and I will say if you get a chance to drive by, this is a house that was built in 1911 and it is going to be restored to its original or close to its original condition and a pocket park, a pocket neighborhood, excuse me, to be added to this area. So we are hopeful for what it brings and we are also hopeful for the neighbors and the community to also be a part of what this pocket neighborhood will bring. So with that, I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9A12 is at 1709 and 1715 Northwest 11th Street going from R2 to SPOD 1179. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, this is to, this is an application to permit some multifamily development and I am going to motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9B1 and 2 are related to each other. 9B2 is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2400 Northwest 36th Street going from R1 to SPOD 1180. Perhaps Councilman Cooper will hear about that before we understand what we need to do on item 9B1 amending it. So it's in your hands, Councilman Cooper. 9B1 and 2. There it is. This is at 36th Street?
Yes. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Matthew Ratcliffe?
Matthew Ratcliffe with Mass Architects, 1228 Broadway Place.
Good to see you this morning. Would you mind telling the good people of our city what good news you're bringing to that particular area?
For sure. So we are working with the Oklahoma City County Health Department to take over one of the elementary school sites that has been reoriented through the Pathway to Greatness and left this building available for other uses. And so the City County Health Department is looking to open the Sequoia Learning and Wellness Academy to provide some additional services to the neighborhood for this facility to remain an asset. So they are focusing on after-school programs and then are co-locating some of their other business uses to this facility so that it will remain occupied during the day.
Could you explain? And I think this is pretty well-known. It's conversations I heard the moment Pathways to Greatness became a three words that a lot of people had a lot of opinions about. Can you explain why it's so important that during the day, this remain and open?
Yeah, so I mean, even now, as we've been going through the process of making sure that we get the zoning correct and we had some good collaborations with planning commissioner Powers to make sure that we got the language correct, which is why there was the amendments to the original master design statement. But even while we're going through this effort and the City County Health Department started to look at spaces, they've been fighting with different vandalism and other things that have been going on with the building that will be sort of remedied once it becomes an occupied space. And so we're working to try to get somebody into that facility as quickly as possible so that there's somebody there to live in it, take care of it, and then it can remain an asset for the public school district, which is still retaining ownership of the facility.
Are you privy to any of the, also, thank you for that backstory. Are you privy to any of the conversations that have taken place between the OKC County Health and the neighbors around in terms of what services this building will provide?
Yeah, they had a community meeting kind of toward the beginning and we can let the City County Health Department speak also. And so we've been trying to pull a lot of that in with the different programs and partners that they're looking at, but I'll defer to the City County Health Department.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Phil Maitew, Oklahoma City County Health Department. Yes, we have been engaged with the Neighborhood Association. They're actually really highly anticipatory of us getting in there.
Sure.
We've had four break-ins in that since it's been unoccupied, so we really do want to get some people in there. We're going to move about 50 staff in there. We're going to bring in some other programs that are going to benefit the neighborhood, like after-school programs, possibly a feeding program, mental health services, whatever it is we can do in there. Those would be telemed, by the way. So, you know, we've kind of promised the neighborhoods that we're not going to be detractor to the neighborhood. We're going to try to make it better. We also want to open up the grounds to make that more of a park-like atmosphere where people can utilize the space. So, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. That's our plan.
Right. And I believe that the conversations took place in terms of like literal community outreach. You all had town halls, hosted town halls and heard feedback from the people. Is that correct?
Correct. We had a couple of town halls and we've actually just met with the Neighborhood Association in the parking lot. So we went out there and had a cookout with them and talked to the folks that showed up. We discussed what would be going on in there.
Is there anyone else here who signed up to speak on this particular item?
Nope.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for your work. Dwayne, your architecture firm, thank you very much. What's so important, I mean, this sort of facility is literally one of the two reasons I keep telling people I decided to leave my job at Jefferson Middle School and run for city council because these sort of centers, these community centers, we have another one further up the road many people know, 36th and Western, Boys and Girls Club. And, you know, they told me that history of crime being just as high as it can be in Memorial Park, along Classen, and along came the Boys and Girls Club. We gave kiddos a place to go after school during summer breaks, Christmas breaks, Thanksgiving breaks, spring break, weekends. And turns out, when people have a place to go to help provide some structure, things change. So I'm real-
You're correct.
I mean, I just can't tell you how excited I am about this partnership and this wonderful opportunity that Sequoia is going to have. And with that, I'd like to move for approval.
Okay. Is there a second? Now, this would be, I'm going to take that as a motion for the amendment at 9B1.
What's the proper way to-
We need to do the amendment first, right? 9B1.
So move for the amendment first, then please.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So this is a motion and a second on 9B1, the amendment to the master design statement. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, I would entertain a motion, Councilman Cooper, to adopt the ordinance at 9B2.
I'd like to make a motion to move the ordinance 9B2.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Do we need an emergency with this?
Thank you. I don't know. Do we? Is there a need for an emergency?
Is there, Kenny? We had talked about that. I remember originally-
It depends on. Yes. Emergency would be good.
I just thought when we did 9B2 that that was the, because it had emergency-
So that doesn't actually, just for future, that doesn't include the emergency? That word emergency there is in every item as a notice that you could have an emergency, but you got to actually make the motion and have a vote.
Yeah, then I would actually like to make a motion to move it as an emergency.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to adopt this with an emergency. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. 9C, this is an ordinance on final hearings. This is the third of three meetings where we have considered this. This is an update to our ordinances to comply with state law in regards to transporting a pistol in a vehicle. We've had a presentation. We've had a public hearing today. Would be final consideration. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes seven to two. Okay. 9D, this is also an ordinance on final hearing, the third of three meetings. We had a presentation. We had a public hearing. This regards, again, some compliance with state law on the part of our ordinances regarding, in this case, marijuana vaping. And I believe there may be an amendment on this that we'd like to discuss. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, so I asked staff if, given some just feedback I received from folks after the original introduction and presentation, I received inquiries asking if we could kind of maybe even just take a step further and say, you know, whether you're vaping tobacco or marijuana products, to say that's not something that you can, essentially to capture both of those things and not just single out marijuana products and the vaping part of this. So the amended version you should have in front of you essentially is, and I might let Steve Kreese just speak to it a little more technically because he took the time and thank you for all your work on this. When I was looking through it, I was like, yep, that was a lot of work. So this would just, you know, and this would just take it a step further to just kind of essentially say vaping on public, in public facilities is also prohibited regardless of what the substance is.
That's true. The floor amendment that you have in front of you would expand the regulation to include basically the vaping of anything. The ordinance that was introduced last month regulates the vaping and smoking of marijuana only, not tobacco. So the amendment would include tobacco or nicotine and really anything else. So that's all the floor amendment does and it does add definitions for marijuana products and vaping. We had to add a little bit of defining terms in there to help with that expansion, but nothing substantive deviation from the original ordinance that was introduced last month.
How does it deviate from state statute?
It's actually, the state doesn't explicitly, as far as adults go, say one way or the other about vaping tobacco. But we have decided we're not preempted by the state legislature, so if we wanted to exercise the authority given to us to regulate it locally, this is something that the amendment would do.
Beth, if you wouldn't mind, since this is the first time I'm seeing it and I haven't got to read it, I'd like to defer this to the next meeting so I can study it and compare it with state statute.
Yeah, and I also, I want to also thank Councilmember Cooper. When we were speaking about this on Friday, we did just want to clarify that. So if someone does have a medical card, is this, how does that treat them maybe differently than if someone didn't?
Well, technically, it would apply to anybody smoking or vaping. It wouldn't- Well, technically, it would apply to anybody smoking or vaping. It wouldn't take into account the reason they were doing it. So, it may appear as though it would target folks who are using medical marijuana for medical reasons, but it only prohibits that use in public areas.
So, essentially, someone could just step across the street and it wouldn't, if they were on like, say-
Yes, actually, streets and sidewalks are permissible areas. And it doesn't regulate other types of ingestion of that product.
Okay. So, do we just need to vote to introduce and then defer this?
I think you just, basically, you're just deferring item 9D.
Okay, okay. Then I will motion to defer 9D for two weeks.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, 9E. Some ordinances on final hearing from the Traffic Commission. 9E1 removes metered parking on the north side of West Main Street near Broadway. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, this is to allow for a loading zone south of the Cotter Tower, and I'll motion for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E2 establishing 60-degree angle parking within a proposed setback parking area on the north side of Northwest Second near Douglas. Councilwoman Hammond?
Yes, so, the next couple of applications are specific to development that we passed a few weeks ago, or maybe a month ago. And this just will add the street parking for that development, and I will motion for approval on this item.
And it looks like all of the remaining-
Yes, it's like four of them, I believe.
I'm just going to kind of speed through them then. So, we've got 9E2. You've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. You want to make a motion on 9E3 then?
Yes, I'll move to approve 9E3.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E4.
Motion to approve?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E5.
I'll motion to approve that as well.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9E6.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 9F1. This is an ordinance to be introduced today, set for a public hearing February 18th, final hearing March 3rd, relates to the mechanical code. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so, David Adcock is here with the Development Services Department. And David's going to present, actually, 9F1 and 2, that deals with the mechanical code. G1 and 2 is the plumbing code. And then, H3, I mean, H kind of deals with both of those. And so, he's going to cover all of those issues, and then we can come back and talk them separately.
Good morning. David Adcock. I'm manager of Development Center in the Development Services Department. Today, we're bringing to you the recommendations by Oklahoma City's Plumbing and Mechanical Code Commissions to adopt the 2015 additions of the International Plumbing Code, the International Mechanical Code, and the International Fuel Gas Code. Purpose of adopting current construction codes is to allow for innovation while continuing efforts to mitigate the risk of life and property. This is accomplished by addressing new designs, materials, and installation methods of plumbing and mechanical systems while emphasizing safety and performance. With the adoption of these codes, the city of Oklahoma City will be aligned with the state-adopted plumbing, mechanical, and fuel gas codes that are currently in effect at the state level. They are known at the state or adopted at the state level as the minimum installation standards for the state. Now, this code also protects the personnel that install, maintain, service, and replace the systems and appliances addressed by this code. And the fuel gas code also establishes minimum regulation for fuel gas systems, gas-fired appliances. It also is founded on broad-based principles that make possible the use of new materials, new fuel gas systems, and appliance designs. So, we have already, we are currently under the 2015 versions of the International Building Code and International Residential Code. So, this brings all those up to all being the same edition of our building safety codes. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for David? Okay, thank you so much. Well, as Craig said, that was sort of a description of several items here. So, we'll kind of proceed through them now. And again, in some cases, this is just introducing it today for consideration. So, and that is the case for 9F1. We're introducing the mechanical code for consideration. There'll be a public hearing and a final hearing lasting into February and March. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F2 is a resolution, similarly to take three meetings. Is there a motion for that? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9G1, so this is as he described, an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing February 18th, final hearing March 3rd regarding the plumbing code. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9G2 is a resolution, similarly to be considered across three meetings related to the plumbing code. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9H is a resolution to be introduced, set for public hearing February 18th, final hearing March 3rd regarding the fuel gas code. Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 9I1, public hearing regarding dilapidated structures here listed, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing?
Yes, I did have, I wanted to defer item D. I did receive correspondence from Mrs. Van Staverne on yesterday, and I have a letter from their engineering company, and they needed a couple of more weeks to complete their process to apply for the permit. So, I do want to go ahead and defer that, please.
Okay, so, that is a motion to defer item 9I1D at 1100 South Robinson.
Yes, please.
Is there a second? Two weeks?
Yes, please.
There's a motion and a second to defer the item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement. We'll also have to remember to defer that as well on the abandoned when we get there.
Okay, we will take care of that at the proper time. Thank you for the reminder. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak under this public hearing for items under 9I1? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9I2 declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9J1 is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9J2 declaring that the structures are unsecured. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9K1D is probably an item that Councilwoman Nice would like to make a motion to defer.
Yes, I would like to defer item K1D.
Got a motion and a second to defer the item. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us back to 9K1, the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for the ones stricken at the beginning of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Yeah.
Before, when we talked about the ones that were stricken, actually, the one that we had a Z should be AA. So, that should be stricken. That was the same address on that one.
Okay.
And that was one the owner had secured.
All right. Well, even though we're not in that part of the agenda, we'll consider-
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I took it ahead of you.
Well, consider it struck as long as there's no objection. Seeing none, that'll be the order. Okay, back to 9K1, the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution found at 9K2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Pass, well, he was here like when we did the vote. Did you have it already activated?
It's closed.
Oh, okay. He was in the room when I did that. Can you do his thing to green real quick? Okay, now you can turn it off if you want. All right, passes unanimously. Okay, now we are at 9L. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust to be introduced and set for public hearing and final consideration on February 18th. This regards an allocation of $400,000 to provide for certain job creation economic development centers with Little Wasted LLC doing business as Bakery Bling.
We have, Lauren Brooks is here with Bakery Bling to give us a presentation on this project.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi.
Mayor, council members. My name is Lauren Brooks. I am the owner and the founder of Bakery Bling. We started the company in 2012. Right now, our headquarters are in Southern California. We plan on moving everything to Oklahoma City. We manufacture cookies, gingerbread houses, sugars, edible glitters, icings, you name it. We do everything for the baking industry. We've created a line of cookie kits that has opened up a new market segue for us. We do projects for Target, Walmart, Michael's, Home Goods, Belk. Have a meeting with Homeland today. We've seen a lot of growth and expansion that has forced us out of California and to look for new headquarters in other places. We considered Texas, Arizona, Nevada, Utah, and Idaho, but ultimately decided on Oklahoma City. The building we found is at 6,000 Northwest 23rd Street. The incentive offerings was a major part in our decision-making and process. With the growth of our company, finding the right package was as important to me as anything. The capital investment, we will be purchasing the building for 2.6 million. We anticipate about $250,000 in building costs and machinery upwards of 1.5 million. Jobs, we already have people on the ground here. We are recruiting new employees, and we plan on opening the facility hopefully by April. We plan to start with probably, it says 25, but I would say it's closer to 80. With the growth that we've seen in the past couple of years, we will be at 300 in no time at all. Our wages will average between $49,000 up to $52,000 within the first five years. We hire across many stages from execution to, I'm sorry, from executives to production staff and everything in between. We donate weekly to our local food banks, and we hire from within many different programs. As a company, we've always been active within our community. We actively donate to schools, churches, and various other women's projects. We're woman-owned, so we give back to woman-owned companies where we are. Employee benefits, we currently offer a basic healthcare benefit package to our employees. We pay for 50% of premium costs, and plans include coverage from hospital care, physician's care, mental health care, substance abuse treatment, prescription drugs, and prenatal care. We offer optional benefits for life, dental, and vision. As our company continues to grow, we will add more to these types of programs. We plan on adding more benefits to our current plan and taking more of the employees' cost of the programs on as we grow. Facility building, or as we build out, first phase will be updating the floor plan to meet GFSI food safety standards, replacing drop ceilings, installing electrical drops, changing the entrances because it was a Walmart, so we have to update that. Phase 2 will be our marketing offices and restriping the parking lot, things like that. We are very pink, and the front of the building will reflect that. This will be the building layout, and we're working on that now. That is Bakery Bling.
Well, thank you for considering Oklahoma City. And actually, I think that's really interesting. I'm familiar with that property, Larry. That's near your neighborhood, and that's been an abandoned big-box retailer for a long time, right? So, that's an extra. I mean, the jobs are great, but that's great that you're able to repurpose an abandoned Walmart like that.
Yes, it will look completely different.
Any other comments, questions?
I have been critical of economic development programs in the past, and so, I thought I would say something positive about this one. This one is, it is a great example of what economic development should be. It's bringing in a company from out of state to fill a building that needed to be filled, for sure. And so, and it's, I think this is going to be a great use of that, of that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just as a follow-up to that, I also appreciate that it is along a bus line. So, folks who rely on public transit have quick access to jobs. So, that's something I want to echo Councilman Griner's comment.
Was it your mom that came to present?
My mother-in-law.
Yes, your mother-in-law. She spoke very highly of what you are doing, and I actually want to commend you for the wages because that is a commendable wage for our community, for the communities. Yeah, Joe Beth said that's more than she makes. Well, we all know that's more than some of us make. But we are excited about different opportunities this can bring for others to be able to provide for their own families. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo what my fellow council members are saying. Ward 2, its western border is right there at Meridian, so you're a few blocks up the road.
Okay.
But the Windsor District, I share that with Ward 3 and with Ward 6. And that area needs responsible business leaders like you all who are thinking about your workers. The way that I just heard you list off, I think that's just incredible, and I just really want to welcome you to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? If not, what do we want to do with the item? Move for approval. And just to be clear, this is an introduction. I should say, final consideration of the joint resolution would be on February 18th. But we've got a motion and a second to introduce it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much again. Okay, we've got 9M. This is a resolution to be introduced and set for public hearing and final consideration on February 18th, approving an allocation of $750,000 from the Increment District Number 2 related to the Barque Dog Park Project.
Yes, this is a TIP project. We have Leib Dodelle here from Barque to present the project.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. We're grateful for the chance to tell you a little bit more about our business, which is called Barque. What we've done is very unique. We have combined a fully-staffed dog park with a bar and a restaurant and an event space and an entertainment venue to create an entirely new and joyful destination for people and dogs. We know it can be difficult for people to get their minds around what this experience is, so we find it helpful to tell people to think of Top Golf, but for dog lovers. This is a destination for people who cherish their dogs and their community to come together in a space that's thoughtfully designed for them. Our goal is ambitious. We want to be the premier lifestyle brand for dog-human recreation in the country. We think we're off to a good start. Who are we? We are a Kansas City-based startup. We are accepting, congratulations, on the game on Sunday. I'm Leib Dodelle. I'm one of the two founders. My business partner, Dave Hensley, is back in Kansas City minding the shop. We have two other principals, Joe Kessinger, who's also our CFO, who's in the audience today, and Sean Kraft, who's our COO, who's back in Kansas City. We also put together an investment group of 17, mostly friends and family accredited investors. And we're very fortunate recently to bring on Purina as a strategic investment partner in the business. Purina has taken an interest in what we're doing from the very beginning. We've already been up to Edmund to visit the facility up there and talk about ways we can collaborate with them. We're a value-driven business. We understand that every company says that, but given the nature of this business and the fact that this is a second or third career for many of us, my own background is in law and insurance. And then I decided to do something fun and purposeful for a change, and about four years ago, took the plunge to create this business. We want to share a couple of our values with you. We believe in inclusiveness and tolerance. We believe we can use our mutual love of dogs to build bridges and break down barriers among different elements of the community. I personally have been member of the Board of Directors of the Urban League of Greater Kansas City for about the last 12 years. It's a value that's deeply personal to me. We worked closely with the Urban League in Kansas City when we launched Barque. We worked with them on staffing. We had a job fair at the Urban League's office. The president and CEO of the Urban League came to our orientation session to speak personally to our employees. We've already reached out to Dr. Thompson here in Oklahoma City to try to build a similar relationship with folks here in this community. We believe in creativity and innovation. It's inherent in everything we do. We've combined art and music along with dogs to create a really unique and joyful environment. We'll share a little bit more about the experience in Kansas City in a moment. And it's really all about joyfulness. One of the things that's very palpable when you're in our space is the level of engagement. You know, we live in an age where people are in their bubbles, and they're in their phones, and you just don't see that at Barque. You see people engaging with one another over this shared joyful experience of being surrounded by their dogs in a joyful environment. We're all about civic engagement. We have partnerships with many, many local businesses in Kansas City. Many of them- Many of them have built installations in our park, which I'll show you in a moment. Just a quick note, tomorrow, Kansas City will be having its victory parade, as you may know, and we're honored that-
You've mentioned that twice now.
I will, I will, I will stop. Your time will come, Mayor. The parade will start at Barque. We are incredibly honored that we were selected to host breakfast. Serve breakfast for your counterparts in Kansas City and about 250 other city officials and dignitaries. We'll serve them breakfast, I would guess, a couple of Bloody Marys before they mount their flotilla. So it shows how quickly we become engaged with the community and also the trust that the community has in us this early in our business to put on a show and treat those people right. So we're excited about tomorrow morning. We'll have a long evening tonight preparing for that. We're all about transparency. We want to be completely transparent in everything we do about our business, how we treat the dogs, what our business model is, what we think will bring to your community. And obviously, we all share a passion for animal welfare. I am a self-professed crazy dog guy. My 12-year-old blind German Shepherd is in the Renaissance Hotel waiting for me down the street as we speak. We partner in Kansas City with all the local shelters. We have a dedicated space, again, I'll show you when we get to the diagrams, just for adoption events. Every Saturday in Kansas City, we invite a different local adoption agency to come and bring their dogs to our facility, try to find them homes. We find if you give someone a cocktail and a puppy, you can close the deal very quickly. We've had hundreds of dogs adopted through our space already. We look forward to doing the same thing here in Oklahoma City if we're fortunate enough to have this move forward. We believe in, in being very progressive in our design. We've already won an award for the sustainability of our campus. We have recycling stations throughout the property. We have solar panels on our roof. I'll get to a bit more of that in a moment. This is what we have built in Kansas City. There's tons of detail here, but for those of you who know Kansas City, this is the western edge of Berkeley Riverfront Park. So we're immediately adjacent to downtown. You can see a tiny little bit of the Missouri River to the north. That bridge going over the top of our property is Route 9. It's a six-lane highway. For most developers, it would have been an obstacle for us. It provided shade and shelter for our human and our dog guests. This two-acre piece of property, before we stumbled on it, was literally a dumping ground for tires and mattresses. We worked with the Port Authority of Kansas City to turn it into this really extraordinary community meeting place for people and dogs. We built that building that you see from ground up. There was nothing there. We built it out of repurposed shipping containers. Those are authentic, purchased off the lot, multi-use shipping containers to create this very modern industrial building immediately behind the building. And I have one of these pointers. I don't know if, I don't want to give you all whiplash, but this area right here, we call our Beer Garden. This is where we have, this, this structure right here is a stage. This is an outdoor bar. This is where we have music. We have singer-songwriters on the weekends. We bring in speakers to talk about animal health issues, public health issues, environmental issues. And then throughout the park, you see these areas. This is a doggy jungle gym we built with a local hardware store. This is a splash pool shaped like a Tito's bottle that we built to keep the dogs cool in the summertime. All of these areas for people and dogs to engage together, all thoughtfully designed. This area right here is the area I spoke about earlier, which is called Pet Finder Park, which is where we have adoption events every weekend. Just a couple of numbers for you in the little over a year. That facility I just showed you opened in August of 2018, so coming up on a year and a half. We've had an amazing reception by folks and dogs in Kansas City. We've welcomed about 200,000 visitors through the space. That's not unique people, but that's total visits. 150,000 dogs have come through our space. I should have mentioned that that park, that off-leash park, is fully-staffed at all times with people we call dog tenders, who are trained in canine behavior. Their job is to maintain a safe environment. If they see any sign of conflict among dogs, they're trained and redirect the behavior. Dogs don't want conflict. If you give them a safe, thoughtfully-designed space, they will avoid it. We have had very, very few incidents of conflict in the space, given the volume. We've hosted many private events. We've created over 80 new jobs with benefits, unusual in the hospitality industry. And we've enrolled about 1,600-member households. So this would be a moment to explain how entry to Barque works. We are membership-driven. We want to know who the dogs are, make sure they're vaccinated, make sure they're socialized, make sure if there's an incident, we can immediately trace the dog back to its owner, know who the veterinarian is. But for folks who are not bringing a dog, we are a place of public accommodation. There's no cost to enter. We welcome everybody to come. We have a restaurant that's open seven days a week. We have an amazing experience that we provide that we welcome everyone in the community to come for no cost. If you are bringing a dog for the reasons I just explained, you either purchase a membership, which you can purchase on an annual basis or on a monthly basis, or you can purchase a day pass. The day pass is $10 for your first dog, $5 for each additional dog, which helps us to defray the costs of managing and operating the park. Happy to, there's tremendous amount of detail there that I don't want to take up more of the council's time. This is an interesting slide, I think, for, for you folks. It shows the fact that we are a draw. We consider ourselves a destination for folks throughout a metro area. So this, this green area is about the 435 Beltway loop around Kansas City. Barque is right there at the epicenter, right in downtown Kansas City. Those blue dots represent where our members are located. So you can see that we are drawing membership from the entire KC metropolitan area and we would expect to have the same impact here. As you know, we're looking at a location in the Boathouse District and we would expect to bring folks from throughout Oklahoma City metro to see the spectacular attractions that the city has created in its Boathouse District. This slide, which you can't see quite as well on the bottom, I find interesting. These are our guests and where they're coming from. And so you can see from this map that folks are coming to experience Barque in Kansas City from around the United States as word of our business model spreads and as, not suggesting that people are making a trip from San Diego just to see Barque, but when they're coming to town, they're stopping in to see this new type of business that's been created. I'm not going to dwell on these, but we're very proud of the impact we've had on social and you can kind of see, and we encourage all of you and your staffs to troll our social pages and see the kind of reaction that we've been able to create. People understand what we're trying to do. They believe in the community that we're trying to create. You can see in my favorite where it says Disney rollover, you've lost the title of happiest place on earth. Any business can cherry-pick a few posts, but we encourage you to go and see for yourself the kind of joyfulness we've been able to create. The media have also found this to be a feel-good story in an era where sadly there aren't as many of them as we wish. This is the front page of the Kansas City Business Journal a few months ago. We've had other national news coverage. We've also been very fortunate to take home an almost embarrassing amount of hardware. The Kansas City Economic Development Corporation awarded us their cornerstone award for real estate development projects that have transformed Kansas City. Not going to read all of them. You'll see we won an award from the Industrial Council for our sustainability. And the one at the bottom, we were selected America's Coolest Pet Business by Pets Plus Magazine, which is a national trade association. So we want to expand this model. We are hoping Oklahoma City will be our second location. We couldn't be more excited about the opportunities that your Boathouse District presents to us. It could not be a more perfect location for a Barque. It's so similar in so many ways to the riverfront site that we selected in Kansas City. We then expect to announce a third location that we're very close to finalizing in St. Louis and our goal is to be in 10 markets in five years. So I want to show you what we're hoping to do with your approval here in Oklahoma City. As you know, we are working closely with Mike Knop and the folks in the Boathouse Foundation. I'm sure this is quite familiar to all of you. This is that, the Manmade Whitewater Rapids course in the Boathouse District. We are looking at this triangle here. It's about two acres. It's almost exactly the same size and coincidentally, almost exactly the same shape as our facility in Kansas City. We think the location could not be better for what we're trying to do. And it's adjacent to downtown. It's easy access off major highways. The type of customer that's already coming down to the Boathouse District is exactly the type of folks that we think will enjoy the amenity that Barque will provide. If we go to the next slide, this is a blueprint of what, of the facility that we're looking to build. If you remember, that's that triangle-shaped site. There'll be, I'm not going to go through it in detail, but there's going to be an entry plaza. This is an indoor dog park, which is new to the concept. We don't have that in Kansas City, but we've listened to our guests and they want a place where their dogs can frolic off-leash indoors on very hot or very cold days. A two-acre off-leash park, a bar, restaurant, including a deck overlooking, specifically designed to overlook the Whitewater Rafting Course down here, as well as a deck for people to watch the dogs at play. This will be the stage where we can bring in music and entertainment and educational speakers and then, of course, two acres of off-leash play. Again, we think, given the amount of visitors we've had in Kansas City, that we would expect similar attraction here in Oklahoma City and that this will have, pardon the pun, the effect of lifting all boats in the Boathouse District and elevating all the existing experiences that are already down there. And we think having our restaurant bar on, on that site will also drive longer dwell times and make it a more appealing destination for folks that want to explore that beautiful riverfront location. We're going to create at least 80 new jobs with a total payroll of about $1.75 million, which, of course, will generate sales tax revenue to the city from Barque alone, not counting in the incremental increase from the other existing facilities that are down there. We're asking the council to approve a $750,000 TIF allocation. Our business model is unique. We have extensive real estate requirements. We're building a two-acre dog park to ensure a safe and joyful play space for the dogs, but that dog park doesn't directly translate to revenue. The bar and the restaurant does. So we just have a unique economic model that requires a public-private partnership. We also have significant parking and other requirements where we need, we need public participation to make this model work. This is a really tedious-looking chart that shows you the economics of the development project. It's about, as you can see on the right, an $8 million project. We, Barque, will be contributing a little over $1 million. We will partner with a development company to build the structure and lease it back to us. And you can see how that money will be used, about $6.1 billion in build-out costs for the structure, $900,000 for the land improvements, $900 for FFNE and other startup costs, which get you to your $8 million total project costs. So we're incredibly grateful for this opportunity and now I have to open it up for questions.
Okay. Thank you. It's clearly an exciting amenity for dog owners and hopefully a catalyst for commercial development on the river. Any questions, comments?
Yes, thank you. So the indoor facility is total 14,000 square feet and within that, 9,000 is dedicated to an indoor park. Is that correct? Yeah, there's, there's about a 9,000. I don't, the 14,000 square foot, I'm not sure that, where that number is, but there's a 9,000, roughly 9,000 square foot indoor off-leash park. Okay. Now, on that indoor park, is it turf, I mean, artificial turf, or is it dirt? The indoor park will be a polished concrete floor and with drains and specifically designed for dogs. I should mention that before the, our permanent Kansas City facility opened that I showed you, we were open for a year and a half in a temporary location in a warehouse in the West Bottoms neighborhood of Kansas City. And it was an old warehouse with the polished concrete floor, so we have experience managing dogs in an indoor off-leash environment. This will be very similar to that. And perhaps like underground drainage and waste removal? Correct. Okay, so I know the area and there's unfortunately no shaded area. Will you be bringing in shade? We will. So in addition to the indoor park, which will obviously be shaded, that outdoor park, it doesn't show all the structures, but we plan to build a canopy structure over part of this outdoor area, so in your hot summer months, we can make sure the dogs are kept cool. Final question. So what's the surface on the outdoor park? Is it natural grass? It's all going to be reclaimed turf. We, we think of like a high school sports field repurposed then to be used in the space. And will that have the underground drainage? Yes, sir. It will have underground drainage. We'll have water stations located strategically throughout the space. And again, that, our staff will be continually managing and maintaining that park to make sure it's kept safe for the dogs and the humans. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I have some questions about the parking requirements. I notice at the Boathouse District, there's quite a bit of parking available. Is there a reason why you have such high parking requirements?
Well, yes. We, we've learned from Kansas City, where on a nice spring weekend day, there'll be 300 cars out front, right? People, that's the way people get their dogs to destinations is by covering the backseat with blankets and bringing them. So yes, the space can absorb, and this, by the way, is not going to be paved surface parking. This will be leveled and gravelled parking. We don't want to throw down concrete slabs. So this is simply a dedicated area. And this, by the way, is shared parking with the rest of the Boathouse District. We just want to have a dedicated place for our guests to be able to park and access the facility.
I guess my just, and this is my, a pet peeve of mine-
No pun intended.
No pun intended, truly. But across development in cities is parking requirements for places where people will be consuming alcohol. So I guess my concern is having such ample parking, you know, doesn't necessarily encourage people to carpool or, in my instance, I have a backpack that I can put my dog in and bike somewhere. So it just, that always gets me that we're encouraging people to drive somewhere, consume alcohol, and then drive away.
I think it's a, I think it's a very good point and just a couple of comments. First of all, we are, I should have mentioned this, not a late-night establishment. So currently, we, we close at nine on weekends, eight on weekdays. In the summers, we stay open one hour later. We, we do not want people and dogs trying to find an Uber at 1:00 in the morning. That is, that is not our business model. We also have a list of dog-friendly Uber drivers posted at our front desk, so we share that concern, but the reality is that people will be coming to us by putting their dogs, for the most part. I wish I could, my guy's 80 pounds. I wish I could put him in a backpack and bike, but most, most of our guests will be coming by car.
Well, I do have a friend who puts his 80-pound pit bull in his little cart and puts little goggles on, doggles on him. So there are other opportunities. I just want to-
I understood and noted. I appreciate the comment.
Sounds like you've been challenged by this.
Those, my days of carting around 80-pound dogs are past.
Well, I'll just make mention because to our council that I did visit with, with Mr. Dodelle yesterday and we spoke about some of those challenges and opportunities that are going to come when it comes to the community that surrounds the area, being able to participate and possibly bring their pets to be a part of what Barque can bring. And we talked about a lot of possibilities of introducing pet-friendly options just in the community in general, creating a relationship and an atmosphere and a culture that already exists, but how can we start that conversation now to incorporate the community, again, to be engaged as far as to participate in, in what this can bring? So we have had that conversation, so those were some of my concerns as far as what this development can bring. But with that, we will continue to work through it until we get there where we need to be.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for that commitment.
Thank you.
Councilman Stone?
Just to be clear, you're not advocating that we have a bunch of drunken dogs running around the facility?
We will, we will not serve the dogs unless they're over 21.
Thanks. One more question, though. Has the lease, has it been finalized with the Boathouse Foundation yet?
It has not been finalized. We have a draft lease that we're working with Mike and his team on, but it has not been finalized.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so this is to introduce it today for final consideration on February 18th. Is there a motion for that, to that effect? Got a motion and a second? Any further discussions? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine N is a resolution declaring a portion of Park Lot A, Creston Hills addition to Oklahoma City Oklahoma surplus for public park purposes and authorizing and directing the municipal councillor to bring an action in the Oklahoma County District Court to vacate that portion of the plat of Creston Hills. And I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, so Kathy O'Connor is here with the Alliance for Economic Development. This is a project, this is a first step. I think we're going to have another item that will come back to the council, but it's tied into an economic development project, so I wanted Kathy to explain the project.
So, good morning. I'm Kathy O'Connor, the president of the Alliance for Economic Development, and just wanted to let you know a little bit about what the, the plan is going forward for this piece of property. I'm going to the next slide. First of all, the, the property was dedicated or platted as a park in 1928. At some point shortly after that, the Oklahoma City Public Schools built a school building on the park property. I think for some of that, they had an easement, for some of it, they didn't. So we have this school building sitting on some park property. The school has been vacant for- The school has been vacant for many years. This is not a part of the Pathways to Greatness program. It was vacant long before the school district started that process. In January, the Park Commission declared a portion of the park property surplus so that we could get clear title in order to redevelop the school building into some other use in the future. It is located in the John F. Kennedy Urban Renewal Area, which basically is from 23rd Street South, goes along I-35, and then east to probably about Lottie, west to about Lottie. Go ahead and just show them. So this is the land, this is kind of a diagram that shows what will be eventually conveyed to urban renewal. The item that's in your packet today does not transfer the property to urban renewal. All it does is declare the park property surplus so that then the municipal councillor's office can vacate that portion of the plat and then have clear title so it can be transferred to urban renewal. We will go through a redevelopment process once it is transferred to us. We would plan to get input from the neighborhood that surrounds this park. We do own other property nearby, so, you know, it's important for us to see this school building put back to some kind of adaptive reuse. We would issue a request for proposals, use the same kind of public process that we typically use to redevelop this kind of property. We receive proposals from those. We have a selection committee. We make a selection, we designate a conditional redeveloper, and then we negotiate a redevelopment agreement. I would anticipate that whoever decide, whoever is the successful proposer will be able to use historic tax credits to rehabilitate this building. The building itself is, I believe, from about 1930, so obviously very much eligible for historic tax credits, and it may also be a great location for some affordable housing. But we'll take the proposals and see, and listen to the community and see what happens in the future. That's really about it.
Kathy, did you say the size of that building? Did you mention it?
Oh, the building is probably about 50,000 square feet. It's not really a big school building, and there's some, like a gymnasium and some other buildings that were built later that I imagine that whoever is the redeveloper will tear down.
Is it a single-story structure?
No, it is not. It's multiple stories.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Kathy? Okay. What do we want to do with the resolution?
Move.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Item 9O is a resolution establishing a MAPS-4 Citizens Advisory Board as required by ordinance number 26255. That was the ordinance approved by the voters in December. I'll say a few words of introduction, and then open up for comments or questions, and I think we also have an amendment that has been submitted. But, you know, this is clearly the first major step in the implementation of what will be a decade-long MAPS-4 implementation process. The citizen oversight of MAPS has become, to be expected, has become very valuable in this process over the last 25 years. This board proposal, this resolution, in terms of the citizen advisory board, really reflects the MAPS-3 board almost to the word. Where the art came in was trying to organize the subcommittees, and you'll see on page four of the resolution, that organization into six proposed subcommittees. Neighborhoods, connectivity venues, and community are fairly self-evident in how they were grouped. Innovation District is really a collection of different kinds of projects only linked by geography, and so it ultimately made sense to give it its own subcommittee. And then I think the Civil Rights Center, specifically, more specifically, the Freedom Center and the Clara Loop are civil rights center projects are so unique in that we're not only creating a building, but we're also creating the operator over the next few years, that it just made some sense to have it stand alone, so that process can be guided by people most intimately interested in it. With that, I would open it up to comments, questions, and ultimately, consideration of the amendment.
I'll move the items attached to our resolution.
I've got a question on it before we move it. I've noticed the crossed-out "citizens."
So that's an amendment?
That's the amendment.
That I'm now going to have to figure out what to do with, because Kenny, okay, if there's a motion to approve the item with unamended, does an amendment motion take precedent over that?
Yes, if someone moves--
If someone now moves to amend it, and it gets a second, then you vote on the amendment first, before the item.
Okay.
The item is before you without the--
Correct. That has been moved. Would you, maybe, would you like to--
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to pass the item originally as introduced. Now, I expect we're going to entertain a motion to amend it.
Well, I was going to. I feel a little bowled over, as I feel like I have been throughout this whole process, actually, and I guess that just blew up in my frustration with this whole process, and particularly, both with the original resolution that we passed in August and this. I saw a draft of it a week before we were being asked to consider it. I felt like my input was not really considered. I wanted to move to amend, to remove the word "citizens" where legally feasible, because I know I represent a lot of people who the word "citizen" is exclusionary, people who are undocumented and are wonderful members in our community, and so to have the word "citizen" at the beginning of this advisory board feels exclusionary. And I know there are a lot of departments within our city that have moved away from using the word "citizen" and use the word "resident" to more fully capture how people interact with a word, not just its dictionary definition, because dictionary definitions follow culture. And so, in my mind, us being able to set the culture of this MAPS-4 advisory board to say that this is really for our full city and all of the people who live in our city, regardless of their citizenship status, was where I was hoping to move to amend this, but if that's not--
Well, again, no, no, I believe your amendment, if I understood Kenny correctly, her, if she makes a motion right now, that takes precedent over this.
Yeah, she just needs a second to--
So, yeah, make your motion.
I would like to motion to amend, to remove this word "citizen" where legally possible, I consulted with our legal department, and there are areas where we can change that that do not affect the original ordinance and having to go through the legal hoops to potentially do that. So I move to amend the ordinance as I have submitted on the floor.
Got it. Got a motion and a second, and so this takes precedent over the previous motion. And to summarize, everywhere that citizens advisory board appears in the resolution, the word "citizens" would be deleted. And so that's the motion on the table. Is there any discussion on that amendment?
The one comment I'd make is that, under the original resolution that was attached to our agenda packet, the drafter in the recital clauses, specifically the warehouse up top of page two, took the time and the intent to make sure that they quoted the ordinance at 52-23.7C. What I mean by that is they specifically put in quotes "citizens sales tax advisory." And I think that's important. I have some real legal concerns that I would prefer to discuss an executive session with the advice of council if we're going to wade into this deeply, but my concerns center around, once you adopt an ordinance, once you adopt a state statute, once you adopt a federal regulation, you shouldn't, should not start tinkering with the language. I have great concerns about that, to change the language that is in an ordinance that was passed and presented to the voters of Oklahoma City.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment?
Well, I think if we should have an executive session for this, that we should just totally defer this and have a full discussion about what we would like to see and how this should work.
You can't really have an executive session on that. You'd have to have threatened litigation.
Okay. Well, whatever the process would need to be, it seems as if a lot of us feel, or a few of us feel, that this process was rushed in the first place, where we didn't get a chance to fully provide the correct and adequate feedback that we wanted for this decision to be made today.
Okay. We have a motion on the table right now for the amendment, so let's, it seems like we have no further discussion on that topic, so let's take the vote.
Well, may I ask Mark some clarification? So, Mark, you have a concern by changing the terminology in this. Is that correct?
I mean, I've been taught, as a lawyer-- Excuse me, I've been taught as a lawyer that if you are going to enact, use the ordinance, follow the language of the ordinance. You shouldn't try to change the language of the ordinance, because if further people have a disagreement, then there's an argument of ambiguity. You've got one language here, a different language here, and I think that we need to stay consistent with the language that was in the ordinance, that was passed by the city council, is on the books and records, and was submitted to the voters of Oklahoma City. There's no sense to start tinkering with it now.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? And we can talk about anything else. Okay. Seeing none, so this is a vote to approve the amendment as previously discussed. Cast your vote. Okay, the amendment fails 3 to 6. Okay. We are back on the original resolution as introduced. Any other comments, questions?
Just, yeah, I've got to make one quick comment. I apologize, but I think we all, most of us, I think, represent a lot of different ethnicities within this city. And for me personally, I can tell you, when I hear, and I think it's very important personally that we have it be a citizens advisory panel, because it tells me that it's being run by the citizens of our city. And in my mind, if you live in Oklahoma City, you're a citizen of Oklahoma City, no matter your legal status, you're still a citizen.
Right. In fact, the dictionary definition of citizen is an inhabitant of a city, which is the most general and broad definition possible.
So it's--
It doesn't change the fact that people interact with the word "citizen" differently.
I just love seeing that language in there, because it's not a PAC-run committee, it's not a political-run committee, it's not us running the committee, it's the citizens, the people that live here in Oklahoma City.
Okay. Well, the amendment has already been voted on, so there's really, okay. Is there any other comments or questions on the resolution?
Your honor, I have one.
Yeah.
It's not important to me, because I hope I'm not, well, it doesn't matter, but if we're going to have terms of the city council member on the committee for two years, that may exclude some members of the council from participating, and I'm thinking more about the more recent additions to the council. It may slow down their ability to participate in this and get the opportunity to hear comments and discussion at this oversight committee, which is helpful, but really, our role, in my opinion, is not to influence the oversight committee, but really just to be the liaison between the committee and the council to provide, you know, information back and forth. So in some respects, I see our role somewhat limited, not that we can't speak at those subcommittees or oversight committees, but it is somewhat limited. But it is helpful, I think, especially for the newer members of the council, to have that opportunity, and when you have two-year timeframes, it just delays that opportunity. Is my only point.
I know that's something that was, something that Councilman Stone Cypher was interested in addressing. Do you want to talk to that?
And I appreciate your perspective. I just see the role of us as more than a liaison, and I think it's hard, I know how long it took me to get up to speed on city council, and when you're there one year, you're still in a learning mode, in my mind. And so the only difference you and I have would be, I see that our participation is more than liaison, and that's why you need--
It's nothing to hold this thing up. I just wanted to throw that view out there.
Any other questions, comments? What would you like to do with the resolution?
There is a motion to--
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We still have that, eh? Okay. We have a motion and a second, so let's, any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes 8 to 1. All right. Well, I should say now that PIO has already been working on a website where people can apply, and so it's catered to this resolution, and I think they'll be prepared to launch it today, potentially. So I will encourage everybody, the city will certainly use its public relations mechanisms to push out that word, but those of you who have social media will get you, I'm sure, that web address, and you'll want to push that out and make sure that people apply. And obviously, they could put their name in the consideration for the board, as well as the subcommittees, and, you know, we didn't set out a timeline in here, but I would think we would at least let that percolate for a month, you know, before we would really contemplate making appointments. Yes, sir.
Mayor, excuse me, would you mind explaining to folk who might be watching the role that council will play in regards to the appointments to the advisory board versus the appointments to the subcommittees, just so there's clarification for folk? And I'll do the same on my social media, but I thought--
Sure. So on the advisory board, there's two at-large appointments, and there's eight council, ward-specific appointments. And though technically, I make all the appointments, and you consider and approve or not approve all of the appointments, I've always been very deferential, and my predecessor mayors as well, to your recommendations for those ward-specific appointments. And so I will certainly be asking you all what you would like to see in your appointments from your individual wards. Now, the subcommittees are not organized by ward, and so it's a little different, but again, I'll be particularly interested in your thoughts, especially in regards to projects you're very passionate about, but ultimately, they are not council, they're not ward-specific, they are mayoral appointments, subject to your approval as a body.
Well, I would like to be very, very specific when it comes to especially one of our subcommittees that we're going to be appointing, and that's the Innovation District, because that is a concern for our community, and I would like to see, and I want this on the record, that I want to see more than half of that committee pertain to community residents that live within that area. And I understand after, especially with you explaining that subcommittee part, because of what we have already discussed in MAPS and what we have already discussed as the project for Innovation District, and the fact that there are basically not too many folks that are from the actual community that are a part, actually zero, that are a part of the Innovation District itself currently, that we, in order for us to effectively be a part of this process, to change the trajectory and be totally inclusive, that we must include the community in that particular subcommittee.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 9P1. This is a resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Carroll and A1 v. Oklahoma City. I don't believe we need executive session. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9Q1, claim recommended for denial. Don't believe we need executive session? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this claim?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 10A1, claims recommended for approval. We have items A through F. Don't believe we need executive session.
I think I have a second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11, items from council. Let's take care of the business first, and we'll go around the horseshoe. We've got item 11A, resolution approving travel and reimbursement of travel-related expenses for council members James Cooper and Nikki Nice to attend the National League of Cities 2020 Congressional City Conference in Washington in March.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. I'm excited to see you guys getting involved in NLC. I think it's a great organization, and we at the city level have not been terribly engaged in it in recent years, so this is great. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the six required votes, we'll go around the horseshoe. We'll start at 8. Okay?
Yes, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and so they won't seem like a couple, though. First and foremost, I know probably over the summer, Mayor, you may or may not remember that we had a centenarian by the name of Mama J., Jessie Jordan. She turned 105, and we presented her with just a citation of merit for her age, and she spoke about how, well, her history spoke to how she was friends and grew up with Ralph Ellison. Well, she passed away this past weekend at 105 and a half, so just imagine the history that this young lady, she was still pretty spunky at the age of 105. age of 105, at her party when I actually met her for the first and only time. But just wanted to make mention of her legacy that she obviously leaves behind and her footprints that she left here in Oklahoma City at the age of 105 and a half. I also want to commend Oklahoma Christian. Every Black History Month, they do a History Speaks, and last night, they brought Raymond Santana of the Exonerated Five, and some of us may know them as the Central Park Five, but he spoke about his case in general of him being wrongly convicted of a heinous crime at the age of 14. And he served, I believe he served five to, or seven years in prison. And there is a show now that you can watch on Netflix when they see us, and it speaks to their particular cases, four young men never knew each other, and they were all accused to be a part of this incident. And that sparked his interest after he was exonerated to be a part of the Innocence Project, which also brings forward to the forefront our efforts to ask that we all pay attention closely to the case of Julius Jones and what's happening in his death penalty case as well. Ralph Ellison Library, they have plenty of events that are happening for Black History Month, so I would ask that we all participate in something or just find some type of reference when it pertains, as it pertains to Oklahoma City and the Black History footprints that have been left here as well that we can always remember. And the theme for this month, there is a national theme that comes from Asala, and this organization was created in 1915 by Carter G. Woodson. And this year's theme is African Americans and the Vote. And it talks about the importance of, one, the 19th Amendment, the Civil War times when there was something passed for African-American men to have the right to vote, but obviously they did not receive that. And also for women to receive the vote, but it took many, many more years for African-American women to receive that vote. So with that, that's what we are talking about. And I also always reference Green Curran. And Green Curran was one of our first black elected officials that came in 1889 from the land run. He was part of the land run. Then he settled in Kingfisher County. And he was a Republican, and he was one of those five that served in 1890. And one of the first bills that he brought forward was one to prevent racial unrest that was happening in Kingfisher County from a gentleman that had been clubbed by some men. And that vote failed in the House by one vote, one vote. So our state was on the verge of passing that type of legislation to prevent those types of incidents from happening in Oklahoma. But there is an opportunity for us to participate. We all like to eat, so I will encourage you to visit the website, OKC.com, for Black Restaurant Weeks. And there's a Black Restaurant Card Bingo, Bingo Card. So if you are one of the fans of food, I'm telling you, you will not be disappointed. And hopefully, in our next council meeting, we'll be able to hear more about that when we bring forward the proclamation. And if you want more information, you can go to OKCBLKEATS.com for that. And we do have an FD Moon meeting from 6:00 to 7:00 on this coming Thursday, and it's to review plans and discuss with the staff the 4.5 million Maps for Kids project that includes a new elevator, restroom renovations, a free sprink, fire sprinkler system, excuse me, for the school. So staff will be on hand to discuss all of the things that are coming, and we want everyone in the community to hear about what is going on, because we know this is one of our schools that has been on the list to receive improvements for many, 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 many years, and we have not received them. But now, we have come back around to where our students will be able to get those upgrades and renovations. Also, I want to thank Scissor Tail Park, Councilwoman Hammond and I. We asked if they would help us in hosting the Women's March on the 25th of January, and they so much obliged, and we appreciate them for those efforts. And it was a great crowd and a great day to talk about the women's movement. And this past weekend, I attended the Teacher Appreciation Foundation Awards, and they honored dignitaries and our bus workers, cafeteria workers, all of those. But they did award $1,000 scholarship to Millwood, and there were many teachers that were also honored from MLK to Moon to Parks and all of those schools, Spencer Elementary as well. So we definitely want to commend all of our teachers. Our point-in-time count, I know at our last council meeting, we talked about the point-in-time count, and I must say for myself, this was my first experience to do a point-in-time count, and it was a very eye-opening experience for me because it, we, the route that we were in was in my community. And as I know, there are those who experience homelessness in our community. It was my first realization of how many that we have in our community that are facing homelessness. So I want to commend, I won't tell the business because I know she's doing the work, but I commend her for sheltering those who are experiencing homelessness and encourage our communities that are within Ward Seven to also wrap our arms around those who are experiencing homelessness. I will, next time I come forward, I had something, have a more concise, prepared statement to talk about as far as our sustainability forum that I attended on last week. It was a very informational forum. I did get to go last year, and I will say thank you again for your vote of approval for, to allow me to go again, because this year was totally different than last year, and the information was totally different than last year. So it was really good to get that refreshing conversation about even how we're connected and moving forward in a lot of our conservation efforts, what we pass through our MAPS already, and on that national scale, some of the things that are happening when it comes to some of the things we were already able to implement in December. So I'm happy to talk about that. And I just got information about Best Friends of Pets. It's a nonprofit. They have a Pets for Life program, and they're doing free spaying and neutering in the 73111 ZIP code on February the 18th. So if anyone needs information, there is a phone number for you to call. It's 405-550-5109. And with that, I again ask that we all continue to embrace the legacy of our history. And again, even with the MAPS conversation as we talk, the Freedom Center speaks to that legacy of history that we will definitely continue to bring forward as we celebrate the civil rights and African-American history in February. Thank you.
Do you have a few things, sort of to just carry over from Councilman Nice? I was inspired by the series of educational posts she did last year about Oklahoma City Black History. I was just curious, from Ward Six's perspective, what other parts of Black History that we don't tell. I think probably the most known piece is that, you know, Clara Looper led students downtown, which is in Ward Six, to protest segregated lunch counter. But I'm working on, I want to thank the Special Collections and Research Department at the library for working with me to look at some of the original plats of Oklahoma City right after the land run, and as well as investigate a few of our parks and schools that were, when Oklahoma City did become officially segregated, what were the, were segregated blacks elementary schools. So I'll hopefully be able to share more of that throughout the month, but I do find it fascinating to learn about all of this history that we just don't really tell. So that will be on my social media throughout the month. And I also want to give a thank you to our Embark Transit Service. On Sunday, I hosted a How to Transit event where we took the bus from the Plaza District down to the Downtown Transit Terminal and took the streetcar up to Factory Obscura. Particularly, I want to thank Michael Scroggins and Caitlin Ford for kind of going the distance on helping organize that event and being there on Sunday to talk with folks that have taken the bus before, the folks that haven't, and just really make that event really a success. We had over 20 people attend. About 10 or so were from a group called Oklahoma People First, which is an advocacy organization that is represented of people who with developmental disabilities and delays. And it was really great to talk with them about their experiences using transit in Oklahoma City and the region, as well as we had probably had about 10 or so that just had never taken the bus before and got to learn kind of just some of the ins and outs and maybe feel a little more empowered to know what to do and how to plan a trip on our bus. So I just want to thank our Embark Department for helping with that. I'd also like to speak to, in about a month, a month from yesterday, I think, we'll have a vote that pertains to city issues. There's the parks petition, that's a 1/8 dedicated sales tax that would go to our parks department. I know there was a story, I think, a news story in December, maybe early January, that in my mind, when I read it and looked at it, did not have the full information. So I've gotten a lot of folks reaching out to me confused about that, what that sales tax is, what it could do, who proposed it even. A lot of people think it's coming from the council, when it was an initiative petition by people who live in Oklahoma City. So I just, I just want to speak to that the city's website does have information just about, has a copy of the initiative petition, all the kind of details about where and how that money could get spent. I know from, oh, also, if people do want to vote in that election on March 3rd, February 7th, which is this Friday, is the date to either register or if you need to update your registration, if you've moved, it would be that, this coming Friday. But I know from my perspective, I have a lot of constituents who have reached out about items that they'd like to see in our parks in Ward Six. And in particular, I've had folks that use Wheeler Park quite regularly. There's a soccer league that practices there. There's no official soccer turf, there's no goals, they just sort of set up and do their thing. And that's one of those items that, right now, there's no bond money allocated for that, their parks department just doesn't have it in their budget. So that's one of those items that I've been advised would be eligible for that money to be spent on. So I just, I really want people to know where to look for information, to go get educated for themselves about what that money would be spent on, because there has just been some misinformation kind of floating around about it. Again, speaking of misinformation, one other thing I'd like to say is I saw a news story yesterday that was from a local news station with a headline that made it sound like people are moving to Oklahoma City just to be homeless. And I just want to say that I appreciate that in the news story, they did interview some of our city staff that work on housing and issues related to homelessness. They interviewed City Rescue Mission and did have some actual information, but it was really buried in the story and just reported it in a way that, from where I sit, was just a little irresponsible to kind of scare people and then just be like, oh, by the way, everything we just said is not true. So I just want to confirm and affirm that in the point-in-time count last year, the data shows that over 70% of the people that were interviewed and surveyed during that point-in-time count became homeless when they lived in Oklahoma City. And only 7% of the people that City Rescue Mission serves are from out of state. So the perception, it's a very popular myth from a lot of different cities, and so it just makes me, begs the question that if everyone's bussing people who live outside to one another, it sort of seems like there's got to be something incorrect about that. So I just want to make sure people know to look for the right information. The Homeless Alliance has a great facts and myths reference sheet, and you can go find the actual information either from our city department, from, in the planning department that works on homeless services, or from the folks who are experts in doing that work who are promoting the correct information. Appreciate it.
I would like to extend my sincere condolences to the family of that young lady who's a member of the Moore High School cross-country team who was killed yesterday, and sympathies to all those who were injured and to all the families and classmates. It has truly created a cloud of sadness over the entire community of Moore and South Oklahoma City, and again, just wish the best for those who are suffering. Thank you.
Well said. Todd?
I just, I wanted to echo Congressman Greenwell, Congressman, you got to raise, Councilman Greenwell's.
That hasn't been disclosed.
Okay. His sentiments. Our thoughts and prayers are with all those staff, students, entire neighborhood of more public schools that were affected by that tragedy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just applaud the Westbury South neighborhood for the great meeting they had last week. My wife and I were impressed with the enthusiasm and the dedication of the residents out there. And then last night, we had the privilege of going to the Musgrave-Pennington Neighborhood Association meeting. They have some great plans for this year. And for those residents in Windsor Hills, Saturday morning, the head of education for Putnam City will be speaking at 10 o'clock. Look forward to seeing you there. Thank you, Your Honor.
James, you want to close this out with this week's reading of Boomtown?
Be careful what you ask. First, let me say, as I speak on Black History, forgive me, I'm recovering from an ear infection, an inner ear infection and vertigo, which is the first time I've ever had vertigo. It's been not a fun past three days. I even hesitated to speak on this topic this morning, Black History, until I got all my bearings, but we don't tell these stories enough, and this was literally just going to leave me with one more council meeting later in February, and there's so many untold I think first, I want to send the sincerest thank you to the residents of Ward Two who elected me to this position. They made history when they elected the first biracial or black person outside of Ward Seven to serve on the city council. And I hope and pray that years from now, when I'm gone, that the political science books, and I suspect they will, study what the residents of Ward Two did. Ward Two is incredible because rare is the day that a majority white district or ward elects a person of color. I am forever proud of them because they took Martin Luther King so seriously and not judging me by the color of my skin, but the content of my character. And when I asked them what their concerns were for their neighborhoods and their hopes for their city, and they said transportation, homelessness, better schools, drainage and streets and parks. And I said, that's exactly the work I want to do. And they said, you're hired. And I just think that's incredible, and I really, I hope that's something we look at one day. But I do want to read a couple excerpts from Boomtown, and then I want to share with you a story I learned outside of Boomtown, the name Charles E. Jones. And that's where these excerpts in Boomtown are going to lead us. It's a story that we have not told, it's a story I did not know. The residents of Western Village reached out to me and asked me to find out why they have sign toppers that say, we're going to honor Charles E. Jones. And I didn't know. So buckle up, I want to give you some Boomtown backstory, and then I want to, because I think the only way to really understand how important this man's accomplishments were is to understand what we have overcome as a city. And in 1915, when two civic leaders, Angelo Scott and his wife Lola, I'm now quoting from the book, they settled into their home on 16th Street. And at the time, this was the absolute edge of the expanding city, was at the northern border of our neighboring, our neighborhood of mansions, that's Heritage Hills. The Scott's house, by contrast, was spacious but understated, and Angelo knew this area well from the days of the land run 26 years before, when it had been the distant countryside, full of wildflower flowers, probably of every color. And he would ride out there to escape the squabbling crowds of the city. Once, Scott wrote, he had gathered 26 varieties of flowers in as less as many minutes. Once, Scott wrote, he had gathered 26 varieties of flowers in as less as many minutes. And from that distance, in those days, the city would have appeared to be only a speck on the horizon. But now, however, there were houses all the way, including his and Lola's. And 16th Street was an in-between place, city to the south, country to the north, and at night, with their windows open to catch Oklahoma's cooling breezes, the Scots would have heard cows mooing. During the day, in the muddy distance to the north, they would have seen the cows grazing around the construction side of the new Capitol building, which they would have watched slowly rising over the course of several years, in the middle of absolutely nowhere. And even out there, however, developers were beginning to buy up land. And as Oklahoma City's Nowheres were disappearing fast, it was possible to imagine a day when they would actually be outnumbered by the Somewheres, people, structures, destinations, congregations. Someday, there would be no more countryside at all, no more cows, only houses and only cities. Well, if once upon a time Northwest 16th Street was our northern boundary, then that means that where Lola and Angelo looked north is where Ward 2 today calls home, everything north of 23rd Street. And it would have been farm, and it would have been cattle, it would have been grassland. It might be time to remind everyone that we stand on the sacred ground of the Apache and the Wichita and the Cato. We were here before any European settlement, even before Black folk arrived, who would have been arriving around the time of the Civil War and establishing all Black towns. When we read the records of Roscoe Dungy and the Black Dispatch, we learned that his fights were largely to allow Black residents who had been confined by Jim Crow segregation to the east side of our city, to what we call Deep Deuce today, to a historic neighborhood to which I will speak proudly of the next time I sit at this horseshoe. Today, I'd like to remind everyone that his fights back then were simply so that Black folk could own a little space of their own, so that they could live where Angelo and Lola Scott lived, on 16th Street, where they might one day live in Ward 2. During that time, they were told by governors and unfortunately, city council members, that Black folk were incapable of being lawyers and doctors, that they were incapable of going to college, university. Angelo didn't believe that. Angelo actually, is quoted in Boomtown, is saying, he never understood, and I just want to quote from him real quick here, because he's really kind of great on this. He never understood how people who considered themselves to be Christians could look at someone differently because of the color of their skin. He believed that Black folk were every bit as capable as white folk of accomplishing great things. And now I would like to talk to you about someone in Ward 2 who accomplished those great things, who lived on 105th Terrace. And if you're doing the math, you would note that that would have been once upon a time a place where Black people absolutely by law would not have been allowed to live. But live there, he did with his family. And now I would like to read to you who Charles E. Jones was, and why his daughter fought to make sure that we always remember him. Quote, "Please accept this biographical data in consideration of granting an honorary street sign on behalf of Chef Charles E. Jones, Sr." Chef Charles E. Jones was a brilliant, well-known and admired chef in the Oklahoma City area. He had an incredible career in the culinary arts industry. He spent most of his career working as the executive chef of many local country clubs and executive restaurants such as Quell Creek Country Club, Oklahoma Golf and Country Club, Willow Creek Golf and Country Club, Beacon Club, Marcos Club, Bethany, First Church of the Nazarene, the church, just the name of you. He held the position of president of the Oklahoma Chefs Association for many years. His life represented the legacy and indelible imprint of a great man's life work. It is the culmination of a life well-lived by the late Charles E. Jones, Sr. He was a man of character and excellence in all that he did. He was a humanitarian volunteering to cook and serve the homeless at holidays. He was a great husband, father, provider, and community leader. He cared and invested in humanity by supporting everyone in his sphere of influence financially, emotionally, as well as with his gifts, time, and talent. Oklahoma City Herald Newspaper wrote an article during Black History Month featuring Chef Jones as an accomplished citizen chef. The article was honoring his accomplishments and his contributions as an African-American chef. Chef Charles E. Jones was one of the very few African-American chefs. He excelled in the culinary arts industry, as was demonstrated by his certifications. He was a CEC, which means a Certified Executive Chef, and achieved the highest honor and recognition by being inducted into the prestigious American Academy of Chefs. He was the 12th African-American to achieve such honor. His daughter wrote that an honorary street sign would represent the personal sacrifice, commitment, and intestinal fortitude it took to realize his life's dream of aspiring to become an accomplished, esteemed, and very distinguished chef. He was admired and respected by his family, the community, and his colleagues for his passion for the culinary arts industry. He continued his service even in death by becoming a donor. Chef Charles E. Jones's life and legacy is one of such example of an individual spirit and personal passion that continues to resonate in others' lives long after their transition. And that is part of the character of Western Village. That is part of the character of Ward 2. That is the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. That is the legacy of Rosa Parks and Clara Looper. And that is the legacy of the voters of Ward 2 who stand on the shoulders of giants with what they have accomplished and what we will accomplish together with the implementation and maps for and the Better Streets, sales tax, and bond. That was lengthy, what I just read. That was lengthy, what I just said. But too often, these histories and these stories are untold in our books. Too often, we resign African-American history to its own separate class, as we do LGBT history, as we do women's history, as we do Native American history, but as it turns out, it's all American history, and it's all Oklahoma history. And the time has come that we weave these stories together because they are our stories. And with this inner ear infection on the mend, I tell you, it is those stories and their ancestors that allowed me to speak today, even in the face of infection. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes items from council, and we are now at item 12, City Manager Report.
Yes, sir. The only one that we have a presentation on is the first item, which is the parking study, and it's the final report. Jason Fairbrush from Embark is going to come and give just an intro to this and introduce our speaker.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Jason Fairbrush, Director of Public Transportation and Parking. So what we have here this morning is a presentation to wrap up a downtown parking study that we, as staff, have been working on really since April of 2019. We have Brett Wood, a consultant from Kimley Horn, that's going to do a presentation and provide you with some of the results and the processes we used in the study. But I did want to acknowledge all the cooperation and assistance that we received from our stakeholders. We had a steering committee that helped us with this downtown parking study. We relied on a lot of city departments, such as Public Works, Traffic Division, the Planning Department, other partners such as the Alliance and Downtown OKC. So we do feel like we really were able to reach out and get a lot of collaboration with those that would be able to contribute the most to the study. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, for having us here today to go over the results of the study. Before I start and launch into kind of what we learned and who we talked to, I did want to just point out the boundaries of the study, which is largely the downtown central business district bounded by I-235 on the east, Classen on the west, the Boulevard on the south, and 13th Street on the north. I mean, I would also like to echo from Jason's comments, I think part of the reason this study has gone so smoothly, and has been moderately successful through the planning phase, is the inclusion of those folks from city departments like Traffic and Planning, and the inclusion of the Alliance, and inclusion of Downtown OKC, and the outreach that we've conducted with the different districts in the downtown, district boards, business owners, various members of the council, we spoke to you as part of this process. And so it's been a very inclusive process that helped us uncover what are some of the perceptions about parking, and create strategies built around what the community needs to continue to grow. So within the presentation today, I'm going to go over pretty briefly about what the process was and how we undertook the study for the last 10 months, a little about what we learned and some of the interesting facts about parking in downtown Oklahoma City, talk about the parking management recommendations and the tools that we've provided to the city and COTPA and the parking management entity here in the community, and then some of the primary recommendations that we see for initial phases of the implementation process. So at the outset of this process, we met with the steering committee and developed a set of goals and objectives, and you can see, the first goal was largely to implement or create a open and inclusive process with area stakeholders, and we did that again through open houses, town halls, focus group meetings, a survey that we conducted throughout the community to generate information about how people use and perceive the parking program. Another goal was to balance on-street and off-street parking demands. So the system includes city-owned parking facilities, the parking decks that you have largely in the city center and throughout the Arts District, as well as private parking that is throughout the downtown community, and the on-street system, which includes a mix of metered parking, free and unregulated parking, largely unstriped parking areas that's kind of a free-for-all in certain parts of the community. We wanted to come out of this process with improved parking management policies and procedures, so things like technology, real-time parking information, improvements to payment options, decision-making structures that help demystify implementing new parking management strategies and make it a more transparent process, and then look at opportunities to create revenue streams, to support investment in the parking program, investment in the community, investment in mobility strategies that help to alleviate some of the parking demand as the community grows. So again, this is the study area, but I do want to point out that as we went through this process, we found it very important to look at not only the study area as a whole, but to look at each of the individual districts within the study area. And within the report that we've given to COTPA and the city, there are recommendations for the entirety of downtown, and then there are specific recommendations for the different districts like Automobile Alley, Midtown, Bricktown, Deep Deuce, Arts District, that all have their own unique context. And then a little bit about our process, we take a three-phase process when we do these types of studies. So the first is really defining what the issues are, and we do that through data collection, data analytics. We also do that through intensive outreach, surveys, talking to people. The intersection of real data, what we see in the parking system, and what we hear from the community, is often where we need to be to find the right set of strategies to improve parking and help it be a catalyst for community growth. The second phase is the diagnosis phase, so we begin to look at what those problems were from the initial phase, as well as what the future holds for the community, and how parking management strategies, technologies, tools can be used to help the community achieve its vision. And then the last phase is the treatment phase, where we define recommendations, implementation strategies, and a roadmap for the city to move forward with parking management solutions. So a little about what we learned in the process, there were some interesting nuggets we uncovered. We started with the analytical side of things, so what is the parking occupancy within the study area? And this map is highly cluttered, but it shows a distinction of underutilized facilities, which would be the green or the yellow shapes, and then facilities that are at utilization goals or above utilization goals, the orange or the red shapes. And you can see, just from a cursory look at the map, there's a lot of green on this map. One of the things we found was, there's a lot of parking capacity within the system when you consider public and private parking. The public part of the system certainly had places where it was at high demand, but as we look at private parking facilities that have been built for businesses over time in downtown, a lot of them were overbuilt to non-urban standards and are seeing a wide array of available spaces throughout the community. And in fact, when we look at the results of that summarized numerically, paid on-street throughout the community was about 52% occupied, and certainly higher in places. Free on-street was about 40% occupied, and that's a combination of both marked spaces and unmarked spaces. The public parking system was about 40% occupied, and there were certainly facilities that were higher, and there were some that were lower. But you look at those private parking, the last two blocks in the diagram there, both were about 36% and 38% occupied, and they make up some 30,000 parking spaces within the system. So overall, parking system was about 36% occupied during peak conditions. So when we look at the system and think about, should we build more parking, or should we find ways to be more creative about the ways we use parking, we certainly lean to the second and say, let's find creative ways to utilize parking going forward. And just a few of the numbers that we've presented to the steering committee and some of the stakeholders. So the downtown area is about 1,200 acres, about 256 of those acres are parking, and that doesn't include multi-level decks, just the footprint of the parking. So roughly a quarter of the downtown is made up of parking lots or decks. There are roughly 37,000 off-street parking spaces, and at peak conditions, roughly 23,000 of those sat empty. And again, most of those are in the private parking facilities, decks, surface lots throughout the community. Put in massing numbers, that's about 186 acres of unused parking in the downtown, or about 141 football fields, if you laid it out, of unused parking at peak conditions. So the takeaways from those analytics and from what we heard from the community, the surveys, the stakeholder outreach, was, first, off-street parking is heavily underutilized and overbuilt by the private sector. And so as we think about development in the downtown moving forward, we definitely need to think about rightsizing the way we apply parking to those developments, and we ought to think about creative ways to use that underutilized parking to continue to grow in places like Automobile Alley and Midtown. On-street parking has very dynamic demand needs. The city centers, on-street parking is uniquely different than Bricktown, where they have different types of parking demands and times of day of parking demands. And so the one-size-fits-all policy that we have today should probably be amended to create dynamic operational strategies for different areas. We heard from stakeholders consistently from all of the districts that enforcement feels inconsistent. There are people on Broadway, for example, who will park and stay there all day in on-street spaces, providing more consistent enforcement, creates turnover of those spaces, balances the demand between on-street and off-street, short term and long term, and creates better access for business. And that's throughout the study area. The parking management, there's still some room to modernize it. You've come a long way over the last five or six years since I've been working in the community with your technology and your approach to the way you manage parking, but there are opportunities to continue to grow and implement best management practices. And then when we think about the districts and neighborhoods, we definitely have to have different strategies and different plans when it comes to all of those. And then finally, parking and mobility really should be intertwined. You've made a lot of investments in mobility in the downtown with streetcar, with bike share, you've got micro-mobility options that are popping up everywhere, and so leveraging those tools to help people get into and around downtown and create viable walking and cycling paths, improving sidewalks, those types of things, will certainly help to balance parking demand as it's generated in the downtown. So some primary recommendations that came out of this study, and there are a number, we've got a roughly 120-page report that COTPA and the city have that outline parking management strategies, but we've picked out the top few that we wanted to share with you today. So the first is the concept of shared parking, and if you've heard shared parking, and it's been brought up today in the council chambers, the idea of shared parking is two businesses sharing a parking lot. Traditionally, in the sense of a mixed-use development, many businesses have different peaks and they can share parking lots. We are beginning to see that evolve in the municipal world, where shared parking is becoming a concept where cities or parking authorities are partnering with the private sector to create what appears to be public parking space without paying for the construction of additional public parking space. And during the process of this study, we brought in a couple of experts who have seen this in other communities, one that manages it in Tempe, Arizona, one who has helped implement it in Sacramento, California, where the city and the parking authority have gone out and assumed the role of the parking operator. So instead of, you know, an Ace Parking or Bob's Parking, it's COTPA going out and managing off-street parking and leveraging a partnership with the private sector to managing off-street parking and leveraging a partnership with the private sector to create the look and feel of public parking. And there's, it goes a long way to have it branded and look and feel like it's city parking to ease some of the concerns of the patron and make it seem like a simpler system. And then you can add in marketing and branding and education about how to get to those. The other beauty is, there's a revenue share. So, if you implement paid parking in some of those lots, there's a revenue share between COTPA and the private operator, or private property owner. It's not easy to implement this type of strategy, because there's always some learyness on the end of the parking operator, or property owner. But we've seen, in those communities, Sacramento and Tempe, doing small-scale pilots to start this off and evaluating the success of that, and then marketing the success of that to the private property owner community. You're able to snowball this effort and create more of a parking system, public parking system, without building spaces. And I think that's critically important when we think about what transportation may look like in five to 10 years, as more and more people think about transit, more and more people are adopting micro-mobility as a viable mode of transportation, and autonomous vehicles get closer and closer. We have to think about other ways to create parking without building it, because it's very expensive to build, as you've probably seen in the past few years, and we don't want you in a situation where you're building parking and paying debt service on something that's declining in use. Another primary consideration is improving enforcement options. Again, we consistently heard this from all of the districts, that a more consistent and visual approach to enforcement that creates turnover would help businesses at street level and balance parking assets throughout the community. And so, we've seen programs provide this consistent and modern and effective enforcement approach, where they go from being a regulatory agency to more of an ambassador type of parking system. They leverage technology. You've got license plate recognition technology that you've invested in. So, leveraging that to be more efficient with enforcement, covering the areas, thinking about enforcement hours that are conditioned to the districts that they're serving. So, Bricktown, for example, perhaps we should enforce later into the evening and maybe not so much in the morning, since most of the demand is occurring at night for restaurants, nightlife, events in that area. And so, this consistent approach will allow for a better responsiveness to the districts. One of the other things we're seeing is, bringing everything under one organization tends to be a more consistent approach to manage parking. And so, one of the things we've recommended is for COTPA to continue to evaluate where enforcement should be and what that looks like in the coming years. One of the things we also heard pretty strongly from stakeholders was the concept of a parking benefit district. So, we're seeing this get more traction in communities throughout the U.S. But essentially, if we're implementing paid parking in a place where it's not been before, or we're implementing paid parking adjacent to a commercial district that may have residential, multifamily, whatever it may be, the intent with a parking benefit district would be to reinvest some of the revenues that are generated by that district into the district for things like parking improvements, mobility improvements, sidewalk improvements, creating streetscape aesthetics, just general reinvestment for the improvement of the district. Some examples we gave to the committee were Austin, Texas, Houston, Texas, who take a portion of the revenue above and beyond the operating cost to manage that parking and reinvest it. And so, we think this is something that should be evaluated in a few years. We're recommending implementing paid parking in some places where we haven't had it before. We're recommending raising rates in places where you've had paid parking for a while. And so, evaluating the impacts of that revenue generation and the ability to share that revenue with districts, and the scale at which you would do it, is something that, you know, a few years from now, COTPA and the city should reevaluate. And then, data-driven policies to support balanced utilization. That's a lot of words to basically say, look at how the system is performing and set policy and practice based on that. So, if one area has really high demand for on-street parking in a paid area, and another area two blocks away has much lower demand, we're seeing cities throughout the U.S. now set price based on that demand. So, it may be higher in the high-demand areas and lower in others. I did a study for the city of Seattle about 10 years ago, and they implemented this type of program. And it's been highly effective at creating equitable options for people. They can park a couple of blocks away and pay half the price. It's also balanced demand, because in those places where they raise the price, people still park there because they want to be there. And so, doing that with a pricing scheme would be effective in parts of the community. Doing that around event centers like the arena or places in Bricktown where you had event-based parking would help to balance that, so that people weren't trying to find free parking around the event centers, but rather balancing into the off-street system. And again, I point to Bricktown as a place where, today, we could set data-driven policies where we enforce or charge later into the evening to account for those demands. And we pitched this idea to the districts in Bricktown, district board members, and they were wholly on board with the concept, because it meant that there was going to be better access to their businesses. And so, this is some of the sets of solutions that we're looking at. And you'll see on the screen, some specific recommendations related to pricing were, in the city center, raise the price by 50 cents an hour, largely because we saw most people trying to park on-street rather than going into the garages. And so, if we were to raise the price of on-street, it would incentivize people to go into the garages and raise the occupancy in those facilities. And then again, those on-street facilities would likely still continue to fill up at a level that's generating revenue that then supports the program in the city. Midtown and Automobile Alley, we are recommending that in certain places, like Broadway Avenue, Classen, Walker, where you've got nightlife, or even daytime activity around restaurants and destinations, implementing paid parking along with consistent enforcement as a means of improving turnover and access to those businesses. And again, Midtown and Automobile Alley were stakeholders in this process, and these ideas were born out of conversations with them. So, these are not us trying to generate revenue, but in response to what the stakeholders in those areas are looking for. And then, I think the bolded sentence at the bottom is one of the more important's, they should be evaluated annually and adjusted to encourage that balance. So, we've given COTPA and the parking management system a number of tools and performance metrics to evaluate, to look at how the system is performing as they roll out stages of the strategies and make adjustments as they go along. So, the final slide, just some of the primary recommendations and where they fall in the phasing. So, in the short term, we're recommending implementing a mobile pay platform, which is already underway. We're implementing new paid parking areas, again, Midtown, Automobile Alley, demand-based pricing changes, city center, Bricktown, modernizing and transitioning enforcement, so that everything is moving in the direction that the district boards and stakeholders were looking for. In years one through four of the midterm, we're recommending creating and expanding that shared parking network, starting small, pilot testing, and then using that to leverage to get bigger. Creating code changes in the city ordinance that support the idea of shared parking. So, as developments are coming in, it incentivizes the concept of using shared parking rather than building their own parking and contributing to the overbuilt system in downtown. As you get towards the end of those years, one through four, evaluating that benefit district concept likely needs to occur at the downtown level rather than at the granular level at the districts, just because of the size and scale of the revenue. But that is something that needs to be further evaluated. And then again, looking at performance metrics annually. And then, as we get past year four, expanding shared parking, evaluating commercial and neighborhood parking policies. So, as areas like Midtown get more dense, there will be spillover into neighborhood areas. And so, evaluating how you protect neighborhood parking and what that looks like. And then, thinking about district-based mobility investment. So, as we continue to improve the density of downtown and the use of parking, then thinking about how we leverage mobility, a park-and-ride-type options or connectivity between districts, so that people don't feel the need to get in their car and drive less than a mile or two to get around the downtown. And then, lastly, considering modern mitigation or transportation demand management strategies. So, again, rightsizing parking as development continues to occur in the places in downtown where you haven't had it before, making sure that they're doing it with the recognition that they're building in an urban area, a highly walkable area, and they're not overbuilding parking, but rather contributing to a balanced parking, transportation, and mobility system. That is our study and recommendations, and I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
Any questions? David?
Couple of comments. In an effort to try to improve utilization of the current or existing parking, just a personal opinion that better signage may assist with that in terms of identifying what parking is available to the public. And then, secondly, if it can be more uniform in that signage. And then, finally, giving the consumer the opportunity to see what the cost for that particular area would be in terms of parking, especially short-term, less than, say, three to four hours would be helpful, I think. Some people are, just don't understand what they're getting into when they pull into a parking garage and are, would prefer, end up parking on the streets where they, excuse me, might otherwise use that garage.
Yes, sir. And just to respond to those, so, consistent branding and signage, consistent with the city's wayfinding approach, as well as just a consistent look and feel for the parking system was one of the things that we recommended. And I'm happy to report, I landed on Sunday, and one of the first things I saw when I got to downtown is that COTPA has already started putting up consistent signage, like what you would have seen at Sheridan, Walker, at several of the other garages. And then, the implementation of the mobile pay app for both on-street and off-street will allow people to understand prices. So, it's another place where they can get that information, so that they have that. But I wholeheartedly agree, and that should also apply to the shared parking system when you begin to get into that, that similar look and feel, so that people know what they're getting into.
And I do want to say, since I am on COTPA's board, they've, the city-owned parking facilities have been working towards that. I just think the private facilities could also improve their signage and cost structure in terms of disclosing it to the public. Thank you.
Give me kind of a historical perspective of how we got into the parking business, that being the city. And should we be in the parking business, and what's our future with parking as far as building private facilities? It sounds like, at some point, there was a need for us to be there and say that doesn't exist. Is that right?
So, I will do the best I can, if either of my two colleagues, Jason or Corey, have understanding of the history. First, parking as a business was largely born here. You know, the first parking meter in the world was implemented here, at least in the U.S. Then, between then and when we did the Corps of Shore, I'm a little blank on what your parking history is. But I will say this, I've worked in a lot of communities over the past 15 years, who, in the '70s and '80s, didn't build parking, especially off-street parking, and they don't control the market. So, there's a lot of private parking that, they don't really have the ability to market, they don't have the ability to drive people into, they don't control price so that they can balance it. And I see a lot of cities nowadays that wish they had not made that decision and that they at least had some control over it. And cities like Sacramento, who in response to the new Kings Arena, when they built it downtown, created their shared public parking system, are amending that by getting into the parking business as a partner with the private sector. And then, there are cities like, you know, Seattle, where I worked, I mentioned them in the demand-based pricing. They raised their on-street pricing up to $5 an hour in certain places in 2010, and were immediately met with the private sector raising off-street prices. So, it didn't do the intended effect of balancing and making better decisions. So, I wholeheartedly believe that being in the parking business is a wise place to be as a city, especially a city that's growing rapidly, because you are able to use that as an economic development tool and as a way to serve the community. I don't want to see you in the parking business, you know, spending $25, $30 million to build a garage in Midtown, when it's only going to serve, you know, an area two to three blocks around it. When you build it at the convention center like you're doing now, there's a great purpose for that. But I would rather see you become a partner with the private sector to leverage underutilized space today as a business decision.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
So, there are several other reports in the packets today. Hotel tax collections is in there, the second quarter interim financial report. You'll see that we're a little bit below revenue, but expenditures are quite a bit below. Part of that is because we haven't implemented all the pay plans yet, but we're still, with the number of vacancies we've got right now, we're quite a bit below on expenditures, so in a good position there. And then, the quarterly investment report that the city treasurer's office provides to the council is in the packet. And then, the revenue enforcement report, that also is managed through our city treasurer's office, just to help us ensure that we're getting the revenues that we're supposed to. So, all those are in there, they'll be online, and if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
All right. That just leaves item 13, Citizens to Be Heard, and we have one, Joy Reardon.
How y'all doing?
Great.
I was at the rally. I got my shirt on. It's my normal thing, the scooters is still a major problem, especially over in Bricktown. And then, when we have, like, special events like Thunder and stuff like that, they really clog up right there at the Reno MLK Shields area. And it makes it really difficult on people getting through that area for wheelchairs, ADA stuff. I am happy to report that I'm seeing more and more sidewalks going. But we're still neglecting the core of the city as far as, like Pennsylvania. I think you brought up, Mr. Todd brought up the fact that the major thoroughfares, sidewalks in the major thoroughfares, we really, excuse me, we really need to get better at fixing those sidewalks, the existing sidewalks, where, before we really start putting a whole lot of new sidewalks in. But take a look at what the existing sidewalks are on, like Pennsylvania. Reno is really bad. There's several restaurants and stuff that, even with our bus system, it's inaccessible for the ADA to get to the restaurants, which, I don't know if y'all understand, that with ADA and stuff, we have money to spend. We want to spend at these restaurants and stuff, but to, for us to get to the restaurants, we can't, because of all the issues with sidewalks, people, businesses putting, like, folding signs out there and stuff like that. And I try to do my best to educate businesses and stuff of the fact that there's a certain amount of distance that they have to abide by and everything.
Okay. Thank you.
City manager, excuse me. I, along with councilperson Hammond, to this point, a few months ago, we had expressed interest in the possibility of, whenever a development is going in, when there's construction for a new development, that we would create artificial walkways for pedestrians. You know, you see these, like, when you're in Chicago or in New York, some buildings under construction, or something new is being put in, and they'll put in, like, an artificial path, the construction, the developer will. And I had, along with councilperson Hammond, had wanted to see what that would look like at an ordinance level, to require developers and construction workers to do that. And we received feedback that there was no need for an ordinance, that we, that the developer, we could just ask them to do it. And that's well and good, if that's going to happen. But I took CityLink for the first time from here to go teach at UCO. And when you're riding public transportation, as you know, you get to see a little bit more than when you're driving your car. And we went by the construction at First National, and there's not a hint of a pathway. I was in Bricktown for a development, I think it's at Sheridan, across from Bricktown Brewery.
Oklahoma Sheridan.
Not the hint of a pathway.
They're putting a new hotel in there.
So, thank you for that. For a pedestrian like me, who's able-bodied, though maybe not today with this infection, but, you know, I can go in the street. But for someone who's got a wheelchair, someone who has this disability, that's who I think of when I make that request. Like, I'm thinking of someone very specifically who's using a wheelchair.
Jason Robinson, too. With the streetscape being put in there by OCU, OCU vault, that corner, they've got it all boogered up. And I've talked to the city inspectors, and I've also talked to the construction company. And at one time, before they got into the wires and stuff for the streetcar, they did have a temporary ramp there, where I could come around and go up over the ramp. have a temporary ramp there, where I could come around and go up over the ramp. But that's something really needs to be looked at.
And I'm okay with, I'm not, if an ordinance is not the right route, that's not the right route. But right now, it seems like the route we're taking isn't addressing this need. So, I'm open to whatever we need to do, but...
And right now, we've got probably 30,000 citizens that are in a situation like me.
All right. Well, thank you. That concludes our business. We are adjourned.